Call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Purstuck.
Here.
Mayor Potem Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boiles.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're gonna have the invocation led by Pastor Scott Tannahill of the Bridge Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Purstuck. If you could all please rise.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today, Lord. Just the sun came up and the sun's gonna go down. We have another beautiful day that you've created for us, Lord, and I just pray your blessing upon this community. Father, you're instructed in your word to pray for all governing authorities, Lord, and I thank you for this council. I thank you for the men and women that serve so faithfully this city, Lord, and I thank you for the fire and police department and all the first responders, Lord. We're so blessed because of what you're doing in this city, Lord. So, Father, pray for your wisdom, your guidance as this meeting proceeds, Lord, and we ask your blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Pastor Tannahill. Much appreciated, and thank you, Councilman Purstuck. We've got a really exciting special presentation. We are honored to have Congressmember Ted Lou and his staff here today with some exciting news about our city's emergency operations center. So, Mr. George, you wanna make a quick prelude?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and yes, we truly are thrilled this evening to be able to have the congressman join us for this presentation of a long-awaited grant that the city applied for now almost two years ago. And through the efforts of Congressman Lou's staff, our own city staff, our emergency management team, we were able to secure a grant to assist us in our revamping or renovation of our existing emergency operations center. So, hear a little bit about that from Todd DeVoe, but I'll turn it over to the congressman.
Well, good evening. So, next week, I'm gonna go to Congress, so let me just first say how excited I am to now stand in front of normal, rational, kind people. So, want to first of all thank Mayor Boiles and the city council and city staff for your leadership of this city. I was pleased that last year I was able to help secure $3.5 million to help out with the Hyperion plant situation. And then this year, was able to secure $322,500 for your emergency operations center. As we know, we're in a place where a strong earthquake can strike anytime. With climate change, we're seeing more severe weather events, and we just need to be prepared for all contingencies, and so very pleased I was able to get this funding. And now, we're working on trying to get funding for your stormwater runoff pump station, and we've requested over a million dollars for that. So, we'll see what happens later this year. I now have this big check here. Can't really cash that big check like that, but it's good for pictures. So, just wanna say it's an honor to fight for funding for El Segundo. If I could be of any help for any other issues, please feel free to contact me or my office, and happy to work on these funding requests for all of you.
It's outstanding. Thank you. And thank you also to, I saw Nico Rodriguez, Chief of Staff, Karen Calderon. They've been incredibly beneficial and helpful to us, and thank you to your leadership. Hyperion, we could always use more funds for Hyperion, Congressman, so keep that in the back of your mind. That's an ongoing battle. But no seriousness, thank you very much for your leadership and stewardship, and the dollars, of course, will help a great deal. And we have a world-class emergency operations coordinator in Todd DeVoe, and we've been working really hard. As you know, we've got this amazing, but also very challenging industrial complex that surrounds us on all sides, between the L.A. Air Force Base Chevron, two power plants, Hyperion, LAX. So, this EOC is critical for the city, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. And... So, I believe Todd is gonna accept the check, right?
Yes, and Todd, he also has a couple of words to talk about the actual EOC if you'd like to hear.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having us here tonight, and Congressman Ted Lou, thank you so much for your support with this generous award for the C O C. And the importance of the C O C upgrade is moving us from a small operation in a single room with a couple of whiteboards to an actual EOC where we can do work, support the city during its crisis or during a crisis, to support the men and women of the fire department, the police department, and public works as they're out in the street actually doing the work. And that's what we're doing in the emergency operations center, to be able to coordinate with the county and the state and also the federal government during these trying times. Today is actually the beginning of National Preparedness Month, and so it's great that we're here receiving a check from the federal government for National Preparedness Month, so there's also bags outside for those of you that haven't gotten one that has a disaster kit on it, so to be able to start to prepare yourself. And this really just shows how important this is for our community, that the EOC is not just only there to support us during times of disaster, but also during times of planned events, such as like parades and celebrations and special events like the Olympics that are coming up that we're gonna be utilizing that facility for. So, Congressman, thank you so much for your support. City council, thank you so much for your support as well, and to the leadership of this fine city, and I'd like to accept the check, I guess. I do want to say one more thing. We do have members of our community emergency response team here today to hear. If you guys would please stand up for a second, I'd like to recognize them for the hard work that they're putting in towards... Thank you.
Mr. DeVoe, can you actually take this opportunity just to plug this CERT program really quick? We got a big audience here, just what we're looking to achieve and what the program is about, really quickly?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that opportunity, Mr. Mayor. The community emergency response team is well-based. That's what it is. It's a community emergency response team. It was established by the L.A. City Fire after the Mexico earthquake, realizing that citizens will come out to support disaster response. They wanted to do it in a safe and organized manner. So, now we have a nationally recognized program called CERT, and this members here that came out, they did 24 hours of training. We partnered with Chevron over at their training facility. They put out fires, they did cribbing, rescue, search and rescue, all sorts of kind of medical stuff, some great training for them to be able to support the city in a time of trouble. Not only that, though, there are also volunteers within the community. You'll see them out at the farmer's market, sharing disaster preparedness information at our information booth that we have each week. And also, they're gonna be helping with other things in the emergency operations center and supporting the fire department and taking roles where we'd have to take men and women from the fire department, the police department off the street where they can do this while they're able to go out and do their primary roles as firefighters and police officers, where we could have EOC support staff in the EOC working with us with the CERT program, and that's what it's all about. And we will be having another program, I think we have it scheduled for the second week in February of 2025, and we'll be putting some information out there for this. And also, one more plug, on the 12th of September, we're having our El Segundo Ready Day. Dr. Lucy Jones is coming to speak to us about earthquake preparedness. We also have Justin Pierce from LAX coming to speak about LAX operations during disasters. And I think it's gonna be a great day. It's September 12th. It's at Fire Station One at 10:00 a.m. Hope to see you guys there.
That's great, and thank you. I know one of the things we're measuring for years now is the number of CERT-trained people we have in town as an indicator of how well-prepared we're gonna be if there's something catastrophic. Where are we at right now, roughly?
We have about 350 trained members right now, and we're hoping to increase that every year by at least 100. Thank you.
Okay, we are on to public comments. Madam Clerk, how many comment cards do we have?
Twenty.
Twenty. All right. Okay. So, normally, we limit this to 30 minutes. I would say, is it reasonable to do a minute and a half each from a clock standpoint? 90 seconds each?
Be patient with me as I turn on, turn off, write names.
Okay. We'll do 90 seconds each, 'cause we have quite a few to get through, and that'll still put us over, right at, actually, right at, right at 30 minutes? Oh, a couple more. Okay, so we'll go slightly over, but do 90 seconds each. All right, if we're all ready, could you please...
I don't know if it's gonna let me do 90 seconds. I think it's gonna just a minute or two minutes. I don't think we're sophisticated enough. You want two?
Colleagues, what do you think? One minute or two minutes? Two minutes would put us well over an hour. One minute?
Sorry.
I don't really wanna call this one.
Comment card-wise, is it all one subject or multiple subjects?
It's a lot of parking, transparency, water tower, water tower, water tower, transparency, accountability, parking, parking, youth sports facility, parking, parking.
Parking was my fault, apparently.
Parking, parking, parking.
The parking will be handled in my comment period if anybody wants to trust. More than half are parking.
I think the parking could be potentially related to maybe a misunderstanding of what your intent is.
Oh, I can guarantee it is.
But before we go there, so there's four topics.
Cheryl Smith, if you're listening.
There's four topics. I think a minute each should suffice with four topics, okay? You wanna call up the first few, please? We'll batch them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Terry Serrato. Terry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, and council members. My name is Terry Serrito. I've come here to not really complain, but just kinda bring the tension to the neighborhood. Me and my wife have been here 35 years. We've been married 49, and so we know kinda what's going on here in town, and we kinda like to keep it small. I'd like to talk about three items tonight. Ralph's, Chevron gas prices, getting gas for the car, and the 99-cent store, which isn't there anymore. Now, I guess it's supposedly, the rumors are that the dollar store has taken over, but people don't know what's going on. I do the grocery shopping for us, and I talk to more people there, senior citizens, and they're saying all the same thing, you know? Whatever they're gonna do, they're doing it for money, and I heard a rumor that Ralph's was holding the lease on that property. Now, that's a rumor. I don't know if it's true or not, but it makes a little sense about why maybe 99 cents left and maybe why the dollar store is taking over.
Mr. Serrito, I'm sorry. You're out of time. We got you, the three items. So, Ralph's Chevron, you get to Chevron. You wanna quickly state your issue with Chevron, please?
Yeah, the Chevron, it's just that the gas prices are outrageous, and so are the prices at Ralph's.
Okay.
You know, both places, I think, could be done for the senior citizens. At least give maybe a card or something for the senior citizens. I'd like to just say that the police department, fire department, and everybody else here in the government are doing a great job. I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't like to complain completely, but I try to stay out of politics, but this time I couldn't.
Thank you, Mr. Serrito. Appreciate it. All right, who's next? Madam Clerk?
Gordon. Gordon Landis.
Well, I'm here for the parking, so I'm assuming there's gonna be an update, and then we'll have an opportunity to speak after that, or...
This is your opportunity to speak.
No, this is the opportunity. That's my fault. It will be addressed at the end, but this is your opportunity.
This is a little out of protocol, and Joaquin and Madam Clerk, I'll look to you for guidance here, but this is under Lance's, which is at the end of the agenda. Would it be appropriate if we move that up, Lance could address it? Or do we have to go through all public comments first? I've never actually done this, but I'm just wondering.
It has to be before or concurrent with the item, so if you call the item now and then sort of concurrently...
But we used to allow public comments after, so we could allow public comments after Councilman Giroux speaks, correct?
Sure.
So, if he brings this item up, we pause public comments momentarily, he talks about the item, that may or may not address people's concerns, and they can address public comments or not.
You could do it that way, or you could receive the comment now, and that could maybe...
This is your item, Councilmember Giroux. Would you be okay with that?
I would be happy to clarify it right now.
Is anyone opposed to this approach? Okay, so we're gonna pause public comments. Madam Clerk, we'll go straight to the item.
You don't have to say three hours, so...
Okay, so the item, I'm guessing we don't have the slide up, but... Yes, we do. We made the parking pilot program, which has been going very well, but there was a couple of things within that program that I believe we overlooked, and a lot of it just had to do with the fact that, I think there was about four meetings in a row where we discussed it, and after a while, you get a little fatigue, and all of a sudden, you realize, wow, there was a glaring thing right in the middle that we maybe missed. My idea here is not to take the parking program away. It is to add to it so that we will have a little bit more data. I'm messing up my streets, but it's pine, right, between...
Yes, so this is the current, and then we have the second, the second slide, which shows, this is what...
Okay, so what are those two cross streets? I can't, I'm drawing a blank right now, but on pine, the ones that are, basically, we missed one spot. Right, so every other street around there had permit parking except for that one spot. So, what I'm suggesting is that we add that in to be included in the parking permit pilot program. And the second piece was along the park. When you actually get out there and see how much land that is, a tremendous amount of parking spaces there, they're just not being utilized at all. So, I think a good way to do this, to add to this program, would be to have permit parking on there between, what'd I say? Eight and...
Six p.m. to six a.m.
Six p.m. to six a.m., all right, and then after that, it becomes a two-hour parking, but listen, if you have a parking permit, you go to eight o'clock anyway. So, I think that's the way we'd be able to utilize the parking that's not being utilized right now, prioritize it towards the residents with a permit, and just make it a little bit more, a little bigger and a little better of a program. So, that's the two things that I wanted to get done on here. It wasn't to take anything away. It was just to add those two things in.
So, no structural changes with the exception of adding parking capacity?
Adding parking capacity for the parking permits. Yes, that part in the middle, and then along the park.
Okay. Now, we can't vote on this, can we? 'Cause this, yeah...
You are taking out of order, so you can't take action. You may wanna pause and take the comments now before you act on the resolution?
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you for that. All right, we're gonna go back to public comments. What could be good if it's not too much trouble? Madam Clerk, just to put all the parking ones stacked in order would be great. Thank you. It was Gordon Landis. That was specific to the parking situation, so thank you.
So, I remember being up here whenever this was discussed. It seemed like it was February, 'cause it was raining. I might be wrong. But the issue that I, well, we had the collective group, and you guys addressed it, but the issue, I clearly remember there was a break, and we stepped off to the side, and I brought up Indiana Street and the hotel side, right, that it was gonna be two hours. And I said, what about the permit people, right? And you said, no, no, it's two hours for everybody. So, I think the feedback that I'm getting is on the hotel side, on Indiana, we need like two hours is great, but two hours with the little caveat or exception, if you have a resident permit, you can stay there longer than two hours.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that.
Jan Pettit?
Good evening. I have the same comment. Parking, we brought this issue to you, and the result is that, one of the results is that we're getting tickets to park where we live. And so, like the gentleman before me, I really agree with him. If we could get, you know, we live there, we have a parking permit. The two-hour thing is a game of cats and mice with the cops, and we have to move the car. They come and do the chalk thing on the tire, and then you have to move, and if you don't move and you forget, you get a ticket. And so, it'd be nice if, yeah, I didn't get tickets to park where I live, and thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey?
All right, while we're waiting for the next guest to come up, or next speaker, I should say, out of protocol, please refrain from applauding. Thank you.
Hi, Kelsey Callum-Carrion. I'm a resident on Indiana Street as well. One of the issues is beyond the two-hour parking, if there's not permit parking available. There's so many driveways on the other residential side of Indiana Street. We're actually losing quite a significant chunk of parking, and so we're having the same issue with the two hours, and if you have guests included, we're adding for that whole block the number of cars that are being able to park, and the two-hour limit is not sufficing for overnight issues. Two-hour is helping for hotel traffic or people going to LAX, but it's not helping for the people that live on the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your succinct message and comment.
Jenny Pastorelli?
I had a whole speech prepared, but everybody's saying the same thing. So, first, I wanted to say thank you. We're not seeing the transient traffic, and I definitely like the idea of the permit parking overnight for the residents. I would agree with a lot of other folks, so it's difficult to get out and move your car. There's a nurse that comes home at 7:30 a.m. You know, she's gonna have to move her car in the middle of the night. She's got a big SUV. I know a cancer patient who it's hard for her to get out and move the car every so often. There's elderly. There's a guy right across the way from us with a little toddler. Can't imagine him piling the kid into the car, moving it every two hours, and then piling the kid back out. Plus, it makes it really easy just to put a permit parking exempt on the sides. But I do think you guys are going the right direction, and I did wanna say thank you so much for your support. Just wanna take that extra step of allowing residents anytime, I think would be great for the two-hour exception. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Timiko Bugden, and I'm a resident. I live in El Segundo, and I love it here. I'm the reason why we, I rallied up all the residents here. They were on my side, and I feel like I, oh, sorry, I rallied up the residents here, and they were all on my side, and I feel like I let them down, 'cause it kinda backfired. But since the parking pilot program has been enforced, I noticed a decrease in airport rental car and employee parking, as well as the presence of unhealth individuals living in their vehicles. I believe this is a step in the right direction. I really do. I thank you. The concern I have is the two-hour parking limit that was adopted in Zone Three. It is not feasible to not have, it is not feasible due to not having sufficient off-street parking for residents and their guests. The reason for requesting permit parking was supposed to bring a sense of security and order, minimizing overcrowding and unauthorized parking.
Time's up.
Residents?
Can you wrap it up? Thank you.
Okay, and residents gain peace of mind knowing they can rely on predictable parking, a parking situation. So, we just ask if we could just be exempt. We like what is in place. It's just, we really, we're really asking. Um, we like what is in place, it's just, we, we really, we're really asking to be exempt, so...
Thank you.
Hope you consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seda? I'm sorry if I missed that one.
Hi, I'm Seda, I live on Illinois, and I am, again, saying we want to be exempt if we have a parking permit, because it does make moving the car, blah, blah, everything you said, just make residents exempt. That's what we all want. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you for having us, um, Phelan Archilata, I live on the infamous Indiana Street, um, essentially what everybody else has said, please make, uh, the Indiana side, um, have an exemption for permit parking, we would greatly appreciate it, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much, um, for hearing me, um, I'm also on Indiana Street, and, um, I just wanna say, I'm for permits exempt, but since this has been put into place, um, it has actually been, made it harder for me to find parking on the street, I've had to park farther and farther away from our apartment, while the hotel side of Indiana is just empty. So everything everybody said before, but it, I, since this happened, it's just made it harder to find parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon, um, I agree with everything that, um, everyone else has said. Um, the only thing is that I did hear about the, maybe the overnight, um, permit parking, my husband works really late at night at the airport, so when he comes home at like one A.M., he's not gonna be up at six to move his car, and then it just makes it harder for me to come home, take the kids to school, and have to go find parking for his car. So, you know, just what everyone else said, if we could do like, you know, permit, um, exempt, then that would be really helpful, cause it has been harder for him to find parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone said better than I could have ever, so, um, permanent exempt on the two-hour would be fantastic. Um, grandparents coming to visit, grandkids, parking two, three blocks away just to come hang out for more than two hours is kind of putting a burden on some people, uh, son-in-laws especially, so, um, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and the last one is Karen Pro- Prolem?
Good evening. I live on Illinois Street, and, uh, I have apartments, and with the permit parking or the two-hour, my tenants complain about they have no parking. And the homeless guy you moved from Indiana Street is now living on our side, creeps around the neighborhood all day long. Um, kinda spooky. So, those are my complaints. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
For parking.
All right. That's all, that's it for parking. Any further comments related to parking? Okay, we're gonna, uh, pause public comments again, and I just wanna check City Attorney, we can continue with this dialogue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Councilmember Drew.
Okay, so actually, what I explained before is that, at, right now, this, the only thing agendized on this was to add those two particular spots into the pilot program. Um, in regards to the, the other comments, it's something that I think we can look at going forward, but for right now, this pilot program, uh, ends, it's gonna be reviewed in, at the end of November, I think is what it is. Um, and then the idea I know is to kinda take what this is, look, look at what we did well, look what we did bad, and use it as a template that you can use in the rest of the city. So you're a little bit of guinea pigs right now in this area, because we've never done something like this before, and we have to start somewhere. Um, so at least in this situation, we wanna, I would, I think it'd be a good idea to add those in, because I do believe they were staff recommendations the first time around, too, um, that we, we may have borne by that, so...
Correct.
Uh, for this meeting, guess what I agendized, I really just wanna look at adding those two into the current program, and then we can look at expanding the program after the November timeframe.
Okay, colleagues, what are your thoughts?
Um, no, I agree, I think it was part of the original staff report, and I like the idea of opening up that entire side next to the park for overnight parking, it should help congestion in other areas, so, thanks for bringing it back.
I think that, you know, without belaboring this, there's a bit of moral hazard that goes with this, because when we build in density, uh, and we're looking at density all along PCH, we build in density, part of the, the bargain we make with that is those things are always overparked, right? So PCC had to be overparked at an extra half space. All of these places were built, designed for onsite parking, now I have no illusions that we're not using onsite parking, but when we add density, part of the bargain we make is for them to be parked onsite, and the park side of that street is a public amenity. So if we establish that the park is closed for public access overnight, and wanna make it permit parking overnight, that's one thing, but that's a public amenity, it's not a privileged amenity, it does not come with, with a lease. Uh, so I think we'd be careful with that.
Yeah, Mr. Sassoon?
Yes, sir.
To the Mayor Protem's point, what parking would be available, assuming that all of the parking along the park was parked with residents, where would be the closest parking that would be free potentially, in theoretical terms?
Uh, there are some parking spots, uh, along Mariposa, uh, uh, potentially along, uh, Holly, but not frankly, pardon? Yeah, not, not, not a whole lot of places, uh, that I can see.
But those parks, I'm just reflecting on, like, my experiences with those parks, those parks are mostly, there's a trail that goes through it, there's a, is there utility easement there? Yeah.
Correct.
So they're not, in fact, I don't even think, are organized sports allowed on those?
I don't think so, um...
It's not programmed for like AYSO or literally...
Right.
You'll see like a pickup game, but not like, it's, yeah, it's programmed for individual training, there's people who, who run individual training amenities, but there's no league play.
There's local, there are some trails, and...
So, so with this, with the proposal, though, it doesn't eliminate two-hour parking, it's not in lieu of, right? It's, you're just adding two, so someone could still park there without a permit for two hours?
That is correct.
Okay, so you're not eliminating the ability for someone to park there to go to the park at six P.M.?
What is on the table is, if you have a permit, you could park along west side of Illinois from four P.M. till six A.M. the following day, without having to go back and forth and move your car.
Actually to eight, eight, eight A.M.
Yep, bec- it's six to six, but there's a two-hour, so if you add two-hour, it's effectively from, uh, from four P.M. to eight A.M. following day.
And then if you don't have a permit, you can still park there for two hours at eight P.M. or ten P.M.
That is correct, that is absolutely the case.
So we're not taking that away?
We are not, yes, ma'am.
No, but I...
And then just for clarification, the reason why we did not touch the, um, add permit parking on the, the, your hotel side was because that's com- commercial property side, correct? That was why, cause it's not residential?
Yeah, that's not zoned residential.
Yeah, correct, that's, that's correct, yes, ma'am. You're absolutely correct.
So to Mayor Protem's point, I, I, I think that's one of the beauties of having this be a pilot program, because I think we're also gonna have to look at one point in time to realize, how many permits have we given out? I mean, if you live in an apartment, it's got a two-car garage in it, and you built it out, I, I get it, but at some point in time, we have to look at what that is. Now, the good thing about having it be a pilot program is over the next two months, if we see all of a sudden that just gets completely congested with overnight parking, then it's being taken advantage of, right? You know, we can adjust, but without the data, we're not gonna be able to do anything. So I'd rather have the data in a pilot program before we make it permanent.
So I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, can you be clearer with just, just the motion, what is the motion specifically?
Can I ask, can I sneak in a question before we move in second? I mean, does this, does this become any sort of gift of a public good? If we're effectively adding to leaseholders a usage right of, of a public amenity?
Under state law, as far as parking, no.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's see here, before we says adopt the resolution to add restrictions, including East Pine Avenue from Kansas Street to Washington Street, and allowing overnight parking with a permit from six to six, but practically four to eight, along the west side of Illinois Street from East Mariposa Avenue to East Holly Avenue. City Attorney, would you please read the title?
Thank you, Mayor.
And this, this expires on November thirtieth, correct, the pilot?
Uh, yeah, the pilot project is, initially was for one year, but at the request of City Council, we shortened the length, so in November, we plan to bring this back to the City Council, either the first meeting in November or second meeting in November.
And can you tell us, what kind of data are you collecting? Is there someone out there counting cars, are we looking at the number of tickets? Like, what information are we gonna get back in December?
Yes, uh, our police chief is forwarding me the number of citations, uh, so far, believe it or not, there has been about a hundred and thirty-one citations that were issued by our police department.
Okay, beyond that, though, is there someone driving at random times to see how many cars are actually parked on the street?
Uh, we...
Yeah, if you look at these residential streets, not so much Indiana, but Kansas and Washington, if you drive down those streets like I do on my way to my office in Smoky Hollow, there's sparse parking there, there's not a lot of cars. So I'd like to know the data of how many cars, not just tickets, but like, what, what do those streets look like? I think photographs would be good, random times, not overkill, but bring back some numbers and we can have a conversation about it.
Yes, sir.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, maybe we could do it, like, a catalog of the photos, like, certain times, certain ta- like, two times a day, take a photo for five, you know, five days or six days or every, so we can catalog the, the photos.
Okay. Anything further, before we have the City Attorney read the, uh, resolution? Okay.
Thank you. A resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, designating preferential parking zone number three and associated hourly restrictions pursuant to Vehicle Code Section twenty-two, five hundred et cetera, is available for a vote.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five, zero, Madam Clerk, thank you. All right, we are back to, we're gonna resume public comments, thank you to everyone who showed up on the parking issue, really appreciate it. All right, moving on to public comments, we were back to, last one was Karen, the twelfth public comment, so...
All right, back to public, we're good?
Yeah, um, my colleague just, Councilmember Protem just brought up a good point, if there are a lot of people here regarding the water tower, that came up how many times?
One, it depends, so, some are unclear, so, one, two...
But that, I don't think...
Three, four. I think there's four that actually say water tower. Five.
Okay, yeah, we'll just, we'll go with those, and then we can decide if we wanna move that item up as well, okay?
All right, you want water tower first, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, yes, please.
All right. Let's go with, um, Lila Shu.
I'm sorry, Genesis, I had my mic off, I'm sorry. Okay, and then go fast until you have one minute. Uh, Genesis Paket, El Segundo resident, today I'm here to address the agenda item in reference to the lighting of the water tower. Today, you'll be voting on, on one of three options, honestly, I have to say I'm surprised this is even up for debate. As some here may know, I previously served as a vice chair of the DEI Committee, my term ended last October, and I elected not to reapply. During my time in the committee, we proposed making a schedule for the water tower that would not only provide transparency, but it would also provide an opportunity for community engagement. As mentioned, this is something the DEI Committee began addressing well over a year ago, and in that time, there have not been any arguments over what the tower should and should not be lit for. Not one person disputed the schedule, the issue was being lied to about it. So now when you come back here and propose ending the lighting of the water tower altogether, it feels like a bullying tactic. I wanna give everyone here the benefit of the doubt that this was not your intention, but the message feels like be happy with the bare minimum that we give you, and keep your mouth shut about the lies, or you'll get nothing at all. I hope this isn't the case, but truth be told, I'm not sure how else to look at it. The schedule was made and will be updated by a committee of unpaid volunteers who are doing the work for free. It literally requires no resources from the city, so I'm really struggling to understand the intent behind this proposal, I'm here to ask that you vote for number, option number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paket.
Good evening, Council, my name's John Pickaver, and I am also here to talk about the water tower. I've talked about this topic a lot, I don't really have much to add that hasn't been said over the last few years, but I think a lot of the DEI advancement that has happened in El Segundo, which is, still remains one of the city's top strategic goals, it boils down to performative actions. You know, one thing I've been successful in getting is a lot of proclamations passed, uh, by this, this council, which I'm grateful for, and I feel like that's led thing, led to things like the Juneteenth Festival, uh, lighting of the water tower, but even, even the water tower is a performative action, and it was such a, a big win to, to get that done, and to undo things that really aren't as substantial as, you know, holding LGBTQ+ programming throughout the city. I, I think it's a step in the direction to see more of that, and, and to undo that would be a step backwards, and I think we've come a long way, and I wanna see us continue to go in the correct direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickaver.
Uh, Wallace McGuire, El Segundo resident, uh, I'm here to talk about the water tower as well. I, this is not the first time I've spoken about the water tower, uh, the first time I did, I was very, very grateful, and I just wanted to say, as an LGBT plus, uh, member of the community, uh, it would be very disappointing to me and my family and our community members if we did not continue to light the water tower. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McGuire.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, councilmembers and fellow El Segundo residents, my name is Brian Barsness, I'm here to speak about the water tower. Uh, I come from a small town, I've been here for many years now, and I think little things like this have really put our unique, uh, take on to, to specifically the area where we live in, because it's not very common, and to lose that, obviously I'm advocating for option one, so to lose that, I think would be just a travesty for the city. I stand before you as a proud member of this community, I'm here to advocate for that water tower lighting schedule that reflects diversity, unity, and vibrancy within our city. El Segundo is more than just a place where we live, it's a community, it celebrates its people, its achievements, and its rich tapestries of cultures. We take pride in this, our water tower, our landmark, are visible to all, has the potential to be a beacon of inclusion and celebration, by choosing a lighting schedule that honors all holidays, including LGBT pride, Juneteenth, and other significant cultural observances. We can send a powerful message to El Segundo and all cities around, uh, that El Segundo is a place where voices are heard and people are respected, but let's not stop there. Our community thrives on shared experiences, including local pride and things like community-centric events, such as school teams and celebrating, and it'd be a shame for kids to lose those as well, because they also have a lot of fun, uh, celebrating things like an El Segundo baseball team. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Oh, Lila, you're up.
Councilmembers, Mayor? Good evening. I'm about the water tower, and it became a really, um, colorful exchange on the Parents' Network and all social media. I read my original message, which was not what Mr. Pickaver put on his post. I hope the tower is lit with red, white, and blue tonight, please consider veterans... Please consider veterans that was left out and others in this town." That's all I said. Didn't ask anything else. That turned to a hate speech. I was called different names. I was called LGBTQ+ whatever plus hater, and I'm not. My brother is a gay. Hello? Since this is becoming such a sore issue, I really suggest, since we have a very li- I had much more to say, very little time here. All special groups know more lights. And just the, just the federal holidays, school, pride, and something else. And I also want to say that I hate that I was used to throw Carol Perchek under the bus, and that was all political. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
And it is just for certain people to get elected.
Thank you, Ms. Shu. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ben Watkins.
Good evening, City Council. Ben Watkins, El Segundo resident. Thank you for sharing your time. I'm here to talk about transparency and authenticity and accountability. Now, we know there's a hot topic with the water tower. At this point, I would have thought this would have been over with. I think the real issue is that the council member who misused their position did not take accountability for it. And I'm not going to speak on them because they've doubled down on misleading the public. But I would like to address Mr. Baldino, Mr. Pimental, Mr. Boils, and Mr. Giroux. You have a chance to make a statement. You are in a position to make a statement, and you have been. You have been silent up until this point about how you value integrity and accountability, especially in how our City Council is viewed. I think the time has come for you to make a statement. And if it's silence, that statement will be louder than anything else you could have said, because it'll be a message to the citizens of El Segundo and the voters of El Segundo that you do not prioritize accountability amongst yourselves or for this city. And that is not the kind of City Council we want.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Keith Pocket.
Trust is the bedrock of leadership. Without it, our institutions weaken, our communities become fragmented, and the very fabric of our civic life begins to unravel. It is with a heavy heart that I'm here to address an incident that has shaken the trust of many of us in our local government. Recently, Councilmember Carol Perchek was involved in a troubling situation regarding the lighting of her beloved water tower for Pride Month. Not going in, going to go into further details on the lights, as this is not about the lights and what they represent. This is about honesty, integrity, and the responsibility that comes with holding public office. As a resident, I am deeply disappointed. We deserve more than evasions and half-truths. We deserve the truth. We deserve leaders who stand by their decisions and who are transparent about their action. Councilmember Perchek's behavior was not only disrespectful to the LGBTQ+ community, but also undermined the trust that we as residents place in our elected officials. We expect higher standards from our leaders. When one of you falls short, it is the duty to address it, not just by, for your own reputations, but for the integrity of the council as a whole. Councilmember Perchek, I urge you to publicly acknowledge your actions in a truthful way, to apologize to your constituents, and to commit to a transparency in the future. In closing, I want to remind us all that accountability is not punishing someone. It is about maintaining the trust of those that are elected to serve. Take a moment to reaffirm your commitment to the people of El Segundo, to act with integrity, to ensure that your actions reflect the values of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pocket.
Kelly Stewart.
Hi, I'm Kelly Stewart. In June, Councilmember Carol Perchek went rogue at the behest of one resident with a history of posting anti-LGBTQ content, and I can verify that is true. Carol directed city staff to take down the pride display, and this was revealed in public records after Carol volunteered misinformation on a community Facebook post where she implied the entire City Council acted. This week, she doubled down on her lie in a statement she made to the El Segundo Herald, accusing constituents of playing politics. It's not political, it's not political to want your City Council member not to lie to you. It's not political to expect ethical conduct. I went on to file a public records request about two other incidents that Carol, that I suspect Carol may be involved with, and the day before the records were due, Carol wrote to me in a private Facebook message, asking me to meet with her. Now, I just find this not normal, unethical. I'm a constituent, I'm seeking public records. I want things to be in the open. Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Brendan Gormley.
This is not related to the last item. I know what Brendan's here for. Okay, yeah, yeah. Now, do you want to move this one up? What do you guys want to do? Do you want to keep going? Yeah. This one wasn't like clarif- there's not a clarification issue with the water tower. It's why we moved the other one up, because we thought that there was probably some misconception about what Councilmember Drew's intent was with that item, which was in fact the case. So, we're going to resume with public comments, and we'll get to that item later, which is the first item, I believe, after consent or thereabouts. Yes, Madam Clerk.
So Brendan Gormley, sorry.
Mr. Gormley, you're up. Thank you.
Hi again, City Council. Brendan Gormley, Commissioner, AWSO Region 92 in El Segundo. Tonight, I'm here to ask for a delay in the vote and to request further discussion on Agenda Item 15 concerning the approval of the revised athletic field and facility use and allocation policy. You guys know, AWSO, we have lots of people, lots of volunteers, lots of players. And so, this amount of players, we're kind of dealing with a limited amount of field space, and we're looking for consistency, kind of in order to plan our games, our practices, and for the policy to be consistent and to ensure that process is clear and serves the needs of the entire youth sports community in El Segundo. We're currently in a situation in Region 92, excuse me, where the policy was what we thought was clear, but now, with the help of Parks trying to deal with less space.
Time is up.
So, in ending, I'm just looking for some transparency and clarity on the youth sports council and maybe push that into a point where we can all discuss it before we vote on it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley.
George Bark...
Good evening, Mayor Boils and members of the City Council. I'm George Barkes, and I'm running for California State Assembly District 66. And as you know, El Segundo is in the district, along with all the beach cities, all of Palos Verdes Peninsula, Torrance, Lomita, and the western part of Gardena. And I decided I'm going to go to all the city councils in the district, there's like 12 in the district, and introduce myself and to the residents of those cities who I am. And that's why I'm here. And also, I would like to give the staff my information. You can see my, my bio, and I'm a former councilman in Hermosa Beach and mayor, so I know the city issues. And thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barkes.
All right, Kent Allen.
Hello, my name's Kent Allen. I'm a former resident of El Segundo. I used to live at 344 Penn Street when I first got married. I'm here in support of George Barkes for the 66th District. 1974 was a pretty big year in my life. Many of the years have been big years in my life, but 1974, I got it, I became an Eagle Scout when I was 15 years old. And the Chevron Refinery Response sponsored me at the annual award. '74 was also a big year, because that was the year that George Barkes was first elected to City Council in Hermosa Beach, followed up by three more terms. And I think he's a good man. I served 12 years on the planning commission. We didn't always agree. As a matter of fact, we talked this mo- on the way over here, that I said the first thing you ever said I disagreed with. But he's a good man, and I completely support him for the Assembly of the 66th District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
That's all I have.
All right. That concludes public comments. Mr. George.
Okay. Well, since we've handled the parking permit item, regarding the water tower, obviously, that's on the agenda, will be discussed, and we have a full staff presentation on that item. And the, also, Item 15, which Brendan discussed, is also on the agenda, full staff report that will be presented by staff on that item. And really, that's, that's it. Yeah, we'll be discussing the items that the public brought up during staff reports.
There's also a mention, I think, by Mrs., I believe it's Mrs. Velazquez, the property owner, about the homeless person on...
Oh, yes.
Just, just to continue...
Yep, I got that. Made a note of that. We will follow up on that. Thank you.
Coming fresh out of that homelessness patches meeting.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to, yeah, okay. Councilmember Drew.
Yeah, okay. So this is the third meeting we've had where we've had the same topic in public comment. And I said at the last meeting that I thought it was important for me or us to not say anything, to allow Carol to speak for herself. And at this point, I think the, the issue has, has been stated, it's not a lot about lights anymore. It's the fact that the integrity of the council's been brought into question. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that is what it is. And the truth is, is that the integrity is the only thing I got up here. Bottom line is that it's the only thing that cannot be taken away from you. I may be able to give it to somebody, but nobody can take it. So, I think the bigger problem here is that the, in the absence of clarity, people are left to form their own conclusions. And that is why I, I do think it's important, if we're going to move past the topic in general, to have some clarification on what transpired during that timeframe. So, Carol, you're a good person, I'm not, I'm not trying, this is not a political statement at all, it has nothing to do with anything. It's just that it's our third time through. It's been some very consistent questions being asked, and just as a council, I do think we do have to at least try to clarify what the process is, which I'm hoping that we're going to do over the next 20 minutes or so. The truth is, the transparency of, we didn't have a policy on the water tower. I think it was chosen, I, I know I didn't have any idea what was going on most of the time. But I do think it's important to have clarity in the process, and I think that will help. That's all I have to say on that.
No, we're done with public comments. Thank you, Ms. Shu.
Okay, I'll say something. So, the water tower, and the reason why I didn't speak earlier is because when I posted on social media, it was under Carol Perchek. I didn't use my council account, it was just me as Carol Perchek. And the, the premise of putting the lights in the tower, I reached out to the director of Public Works many years ago, when I first got in council, to put the lights up as a reflection of celebration. And that's what we did. For the last few years, we've been adding, putting up lights for celebration of whatever, of all different holidays, of inclusivity of everything. And only in the last couple of years, we had the ability to actually put, to change the colors quickly, before we had to screw on light bulbs and take off light bulbs. So, when the, when Ju- when June 1st came around, I reached out to Elias, I said, can you please make sure it's for, for Pride Month that we put it up for June? And it was the 1st of June, the lights went up rainbow. Then, I was talking to Merritt Beachley, and we were, she was saying, we were talking about the graduation. I thought, oh, hey, we just have these new lights. Why don't we change it to celebrate the graduation? She said, great idea. So that's what we did for the weekend, the graduation, and I instructed Elias, and just so you, when I say I instructed, I didn't actually instruct, I requested, and I CC'd the city manager on all my emails, exchanges. Can you please put it up blue and gold for graduation? And we did, and I said, please make sure it goes back to rainbow right after. Then, on the, I get an email from a resident who I don't know. I, I personally do not know. She just said, hey, it's Flag Day, and I'm like, oh, shoot, I forgot Flag Day. And I was leaving on vacation. And I know this, all this time, it's been me reaching out to Elias, saying, hey, could you please put it up for Valentine's Day? Could you please put it up for Hanukkah? Could you please put it up for Halloween? Could you please put it up for Christmas? Whatever holiday. And I was going on vacation, so I said, oh, you know, it's Flag Day, we should put it up for Flag Day, go ahead and put up Flag Day, and that's on a Friday, and you might as well just leave it up till the 5th. Yes, I did say that, because I'm going on vacation to judge the national championships of Irish dancing. Which, when you judge the national championships of Irish dancing, it's a very, very tough competition where you're sequestered for a week. So, I did that, and then I saw a post on Saturday, and I'm like, oh, oh my gosh, people are very upset about this. So I posted an explanation, and I said in that post, under my name, it will go back to rainbow. So, on, I waited over the weekend, because our director of Public Works works crazy hours, and I did not want to upset him over the weekend. So Monday morning, at 8:40 in the morning, I texted him, and CC'd the city manager, Elias, could you please put them back to rainbow for the rest of the month? And that's exactly what happened. So, this, this perception that there's a lie out there or intention, never the intention. The intention was always to bring celebration, to bring aware, like, to celebrate diversity, to celebrate inclusion, to celebrate everything. And so that's why it's very disturbing, and I, and I, I didn't want to publicly make this statement, because it wasn't about me as a council member, it was always about me when I posted on social media as a person. So that's the explanation, and that's the end of the story.
If I could give my thoughts on this, and I'll tell everyone the same thing I've told the members of the DIAS and I've told the city manager, which is, I believe that no individual member of council should be directing staff unilaterally. That's why we have public meetings, this is why we have planning commissions, we have subcommittees. We want more people to come and give input. You know, we're doing our downtown plan, we are begging for people to give input on which direction do you want to go. So I appreciate everyone coming out to speak. That is how we make our best decisions, is when we are well informed. And as I said, and, and much to what Mr. Drew was saying, there wasn't a set policy. So now we have it on the agenda, and we're going to talk about what do we think is the best thing to do about lighting up the water tower? And we're going to do it up here, and you're going to get to hear what each of us have to say about it, good, bad, ugly, indifferent, and then you can see how the sausage is made. And what I like about this job, one of the things, is that we don't disagree, we don't agree all the time, and I think that's great. I like it when it's a 3-2, and we get down into the weeds, and we disagree, and we have differences of opinion, because we all have different ideas, and we all have different thoughts. But I, I, I do believe that you don't take on this job unless you really want what's best for this town. And this town is special, not because we're located next to a refinery and a sewage treatment plant, it's because of people, the people who are here. And so, I want to, I want to thank you for coming out. I want to thank my fellow council members for their service, and anyone else who volunteers their time to give to this community, to make it a little better. I, I want to thank you for that.
Okay. Anything else on this matter? Doesn't know, right? No one has anything else? All right. We are done with public comments. May I have a procedural motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only, please? So moved. Thank you. Drew with the first. You have a second?
Pimental, second.
Okay, Pimental on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. Any pulls from consent?
I have a question for you guys, because one of your consent items requires the delegation.
Would there be 11?
Yeah. It would be 11, thank you. So, we would need to know who that is. So we would need to know who that is before they voted, aren't they?
Just a question, is anyone planning on going? Who's planning on going? I'm registered.
And our deputy city manager is going also.
I'm registered.
You're registered?
It doesn't matter.
So why don't we pull that and approve everything, and then...
Okay, fine. Yes, that's fine. Okay, do we have a motion to approve items 1 through 10, then? Same holds, sir. Do you still...
Pimtel, yes.
And second. Okay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, item 11.
Designation of voting delegate and alternate to the Cal City's 2024 Annual Conference and Expo. And I will concede, I read this a number of times, wondering who the mystery guest was going to be, and I thought I must have missed an email. But I'll volunteer, unless anybody else wants to go. Mr. Mayor, you're going?
I'm going, but you can have, you can be the voting delegate. Done that before? I think you'll represent as well.
It's super thrilling.
Yes, I'm in favor of that. So I will move Mayor Pro...
And you'll be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate. Mayor Protem is a delegate, and alternate would be me, and then you could be an alternate, can you not, Mr. George?
Certainly, if you two can't make it, I will be an alternate.
You'd be the second alternate?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. That's my motion.
It's like the band.
Baldino seconds.
Second chair, clarinet.
Okay. Any further comment? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you for pointing out, Madam Clerk. All right, item 12, which many people are here for, water tower illumination schedule. Mr. Sessun.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I'd like to summarize this item. Basically, after all the discussions, I got with my colleagues, with the city manager's office, and we are recommending three options to the city council with option one as a recommendation. And I go through these options really quick. This is not going to take very long. So option one is the current schedule and themes that we today carry, which is to observe Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day, fall colors, Independence Day, Halloween, Hanukkah, Christmas, El Segundo, high school colors, Lakers, Dodgers, Chargers, party time, and Pride. And with the flexibility given to the city manager to be able to dictate exactly when to begin, when to terminate.
Our list has Juneteenth down there, too, unless you read them out of order.
Yeah, Juneteenth is also...
Option one.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And also, I think Flag Day was part of option one.
Yeah, I don't know why this slide didn't show that. When I had it, it showed that. But yeah, it includes Flag Day and includes Juneteenth.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you. I think we've got, is that, that's the...
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I actually had the same comment. Why, like, why, help me understand, I understand a lot of these. Why Dodgers, but not the Clippers, or the Angels, or the Kings?
We could include Clippers, we could include just about any team on their party time. It's nothing specific, but we could add Clippers. Frankly, when I think the slide together, it was more comprehensive than this. I don't know how this got...
If I may. The goal there was to recognize any of the championship teams that were represented from the area, whether it's, we recently did the Little League baseball team.
I don't think the Chargers won.
Well, I think maybe that's why we left the Chargers off the list.
You gotta believe.
You gotta believe.
The Kings.
All right, what can you add to that?
Yeah, as far as the sports-oriented nature of some of these items, you may consolidate them perhaps into, you know, regional sports championships, whether it's school, amateur, professional, if there is a championship that wants to be recognized.
Yeah, for instance, if it's the Olympics, we could put up red, white, and blue for America.
I'm thinking like, if someone was a champion, whether it's high school, you know, I think there's like, you know, through all the professional sports teams here, I think there might be like an amateur rugby team, or I forget what, but maybe if you consolidate it into sort of regional sports championship observation, or something more broad in that sense, that might tick a lot of the boxes for some of these specific items, and include some of the other teams that may not have been included.
All right. I think there's consensus to include regional sports teams, playoff runs, all that stuff. Unless there's further conversation, I am going to move approval. I am in favor of lighting the water tower for all these events, Juneteenth, Pride, I believe in celebrating our diversity. And I like the water tower lit up, you know, it's fun.
Could just have a little bit more discussion on it. And again, I agree with you. I don't think this is really a discussion to be not lighting it up. I think we have a unique opportunity here to kind of turn a difficult situation into an educational one or a good one. We have a lot of proclamations that have been read that are already in place. And a little bit of research I've done, there's usually a color scheme that goes along with it. Okay, for example, you know, Black History Month is, you know, black, red, yellow, and green. And I was last night, years old, when I figured out that each one of those colors represents something. Okay? I think a lot of people don't know that, and that might be something to be able to do in February. Our job here, I think, is to set a policy on things, it's not to actually say, do it on these dates. Okay? But I'm just kind of throwing in some things, you know. I know we do Women's History Month as well, right? So that's, you know, purple, green, and white. There's a reason why those colors are in that situation. You know, Pride has three, four different flags, right? I know there's the basic, the rainbow flag, but each one of those colors represents something. I didn't, I was last night, years old, when I figured that out. So I just think there's an opportunity here to take it, and let's do something behind it. We have a social media presence, it's going to be lit up for this. And then as you start getting into the religious holidays, you know, everybody knows Hanukkah and Christmas are the same night this year, 25th. Okay? So there's decisions have to be made there. You know, the Wally's five days. The Wally's five days, and it's not the same five days every year, it's between October and November. So there's a lot of things I think we can add in here to turn this into a good situation and be able to make it educational. I think that we, one of the problems, I think, during this that I learned was the amount of time, I think we put things up, has been an issue, you know, what's a fair way to do that? Because if you look at it, and we do all these months, all of a sudden, you know, breast cancer awareness month is in October, all of a sudden, you're gone with one-third of the calendar, right? But I think if we can look at, say, all right, look, it's going to be a minimum of a week or 10 days, a minimum. And if something else pops up in that week, so for example, in February, you know, you're going to have Valentine's Day, and then you're going to have Veterans Day. But if there's an opportunity to turn them back into the other colors, then do so. You have the, you should have the latitude to do that. But I do believe that there's a way to do this that can put us in a better situation than we're in now.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Drew. Mayor Protem, did you want to say something?
You know, I'm not typically one for mission statements, but maybe this is something that calls out for that, that we just make sure that we establish this policy in the name of being positive about all of the things we light up, and day counts, and because we get tons of those, you lit up this much for this, but not as much for that. Day counts of things, I think, shortchange the nature of the endorsement. You know, we're trying to do the best by everybody with these things, and it's intended to be a positive, it's intended to bring people together, it's not intended to give one, to Councilmember Drew's point, at the expense of another. So I think maybe a little bit of a statement to that, when we set this policy forth, could be helpful, to just say, hey, we're trying to wrap our arms around a lot of things, because there's a lot of days that are important to a lot of people, a lot of different people. And I think that all of those things are intended with the better angels in mind.
I'm going to concur, I mean, the whole premise of putting the lights up was to bring happiness and celebration to our town. That was the full intent, to be inclusive, to recognize everybody, and that was the full intent of changing the colors in the month of June. So I just think it's important that if whatever policy we put together, we do put a time limit or a date limit, because this will consistently be the problem. The issue wasn't the colors that went up, it was the timeframe. And if we don't address that, and not, if we leave that blanket, it's going to happen again. Because if you look at a lot of those things, a lot of those things happen in June. So we just, we need to, as a, if we're going to put a policy together, then let's put a policy together where we establish a timeframe.
The thing that strikes me, like, I don't have an issue with most of option one, but the religion one, I mean, there's so many variations there, you know, Ramadan, for example, or, which is the summer, just there's a lot of, where do we draw the line on religious holidays? But otherwise, and then I think if you're going to include sports teams, you include all of them, but maybe that's done through the, yeah, you have an idea there?
You have a recommendation. We have a lot of proclamations that we've already been doing for years, kind of in place, all right? So why don't we start there? And then if there are individuals within the community who want to petition, say, hey, I would like to have this included, then have a method to be able to go to the city manager, to someone, and say, we would like this included, and this is why, and then we make, then you make a decision from there. But I think if you start with what we have, we have a lot to work off of.
Yes.
The challenge, the only thing I see there, Councilmember Drew, is there's so many proclamations, I feel like I'm getting a request every other week that Messiah then weighs in on that we beat. There's some of them that are, there's like the one for the cancer relay race, there's just a lot. It's pretty much every, feels like every other agenda, more or less, at least 15, 20 times a year, we get a proclamation. And then that would, some of those would conflict with these that are not proclamations, like the Chargers, Dodgers, Laker, high school, Christmas is kind of a proclamation, but not really. But I see where you're going with that. I mean, I like the option one, but I just struggle a little bit with where you draw the line with the religious holidays.
Yes, sir. So do I need to talk about option two? Option two was the federal holidays, and then option three is do nothing, for records.
I mean, I'm hopeful that we can come to some concession where we can light the water tower. It means a lot to people.
Yes.
And it's a celebration for people.
Yes.
And I think it's important that everybody that, you know, lives in our town has some representation up there.
Right.
So I'm hoping that we can come to some conclusion. We just need to put some timeframe around it so that we can accommodate everything.
And I would like to echo this, because when I came on board in the beautiful city of El Segundo, you know, this was during the pandemic, and doing this, it really made a change in the attitude of people. It really brought some happiness and joy.
And that was the full intent?
Yes.
The full intent was to bring happiness and joy?
Exactly.
And celebrate other, all celebrations.
Get back to the policy and solution here. I mean, why not, why not merge option one and two? There's overlap anyway. You've got Christmases in both, Thanksgiving, I think, may not be there, but there's already some things in there. Then you're also incorporating Presidents' Day, MLK Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day is already there, you have Labor Day. Why wouldn't you just, why couldn't we just combine both?
They should be represented.
Okay.
One and two should be.
We could combine the two.
I'm just talking out loud with my colleagues, because we're trying to get to a policy decision.
The good thing is, is that over time, we've been able to install lights, that we've been able to change, and that's only been around for two years, maybe?
Yes.
That we've been able to do this.
Correct.
So this is a new, fairly new thing for us, and I think it would be, maybe you guys could, maybe the city could come back with a solution about a timeframe, a calendar, so that we can celebrate everything.
I understood that two was kind of included in one, right? That one was all the federals, and then these other things that, maybe one is what we're doing today, and two is the federal and state holidays.
But there's a couple in two that are not in one.
Okay, whatever is not in two should be in one?
So we can come back with the combination of one and two?
Right.
With some timeframes. It would be an extensive list, but with some time, maybe it's the minimum of 10 days or something.
Hold on, we got people's diets. I would just be clear with it, that there's, as long as we put a statement out there with it that says, some of these things are always going to conflict with time, you know? We've got stuff on a lunar calendar, if it's, you know, Jewish or Muslim holidays, those move around on a lunar calendar, you know? Those are going to conflict, and one day, somebody's going to land on Memorial Day, and we're going to have to do 12 hours, or six hours of one, and six are another. As long as we put something in there that says, look, we're not trying to take one at the expense of another.
Right.
I think that, as a city, people understand that.
Yeah.
Agreed.
All right. I would like to move approval that we merge one and two, and then instruct staff to come back with some timing recommendations in terms of a policy of not to exceed, or floor, ceiling, however you come up with a policy on that.
And also, please add in the ones that we missed. You're missing a few things in that Flag Day.
Yes.
So then the next time you come back, you just have to be a little more comprehensive.
My apology, that was my fault.
That's all right.
And you want to add in regional sports teams, correct?
I mean...
The question is then, then whose job is it? We're going to have to assign this to someone as a job, to make sure that we're adhering to whatever calendar we just started?
Well, we'll continue to keep this in the public works department, since they'll be changing the lights, so.
Okay, let me just, I want to amend my motion, which is to merge one and two, and also add anything that isn't already there that we know is a federal holiday, including, I think, Flag Day, if it is in fact a holiday, or it's previously illuminated, and then we incorporate the city attorney's language as it relates to regional sports inclusion. That would be my motion. Any further, does anyone want to second that, or further discussion?
No, I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. We're on to, I see the city treasurer here?
Yeah, I was just going to ask. But then, go ahead. No, I was asking about...
Yeah, I saw Matt showed up. Mr. Robinson, if you're so willing, I would like to go next with the Treasury report, to get you out of here in a reasonable hour. Okay? Thank you.
We have Mr. Husler.
So we're going to move up item 19. Thank you. Is it right that this is technically maybe the last time as an elected, we're going to see you present this? Or we're not sure yet? How is that working out with the whole?
The city council gets to appoint a treasurer?
That's right.
And I happen to know somebody extremely well qualified?
Exactly. God forbid we lose that.
Striking mustache clerk.
All right, Mr. Robinson, all seriousness, you've done a tremendous job for the city, so please proceed.
This is probably, this is probably good enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Got it?
Okay. All right, so this is the portfolio as of the end of June, so this is a little bit ago. I have some things in the works. Now, I was actually thinking that I probably get in front of you guys one more time before the end of, but I guess I need to figure that out as well. But anyway, here's end of June. You can see we're in a similar place to where we've been, you know, for the last year, in terms of asset allocation plan and long-term kind of strategic goals for the portfolio. Treasuries are a large portion of that, 35% of that. Oh, look at this. All right, even better. So, you know, and then we have a decent amount in medium-term notes, which are basically corporates, and then a strong amount as well as in negotiable CDs, which are, we have corporates, and then a strong amount as well as in negotiable CDs, which are, we have a comparative advantage in, because we're a small city, and, you know, we can afford to kind of, to exploit the extra yield that we get there. You can see, we made some investments in the prior quarter, I guess the months of April, May, June. We added another two million to the five treasuries that we, that we owned at the time, and that's all meant to time with our P O B payment. So, there's a decent amount of investing, we invested about eleven million, but you'll see that coming up. This shows a little bit easier to adjust picture of the portfolio, and I wouldn't say there's anything particularly interesting here, except for, maybe I'll call out the Cal Trust, which is about ten million, and that's, that's performed pretty well, it's actually outperformed treasuries, which are, outperformed most, most risk, short-term bond assets. You know, the other options that we had, which has been good to see. We'd like to see this to be, you know, the green bars to be pretty constant throughout the years, because that shows diversification across time periods, and we want the portfolio to be diversified in as, over as many dimensions as possible. So we're achieving that, and we also try to diversify across asset classes. And, you know, again, you'd like to see the colors to be about the same level. This is investments by maturity date, so, you know, to the far right, you can see, it's a lot of the same that you saw on previous charts, but I will say that the Cal Trust, as I mentioned before, that's, although that's technically daily liquidity, it has a lot more interest rate risk, which is a good thing, especially if you expect rates to go down. But, so this is the portfolio by position. I think I'm legally required to have this in here, or at least as far as reporting requirements. So it shows every position, there's nothing in particular that I feel like we need to call out here. So the transactions that we made in April, those are the five treasuries we bought, about two million in par for each one of them, we got them at discount, because obviously rates have gone up since when those were issued, for the most part. And then we bought nine, I believe, nine CDs, all yielding between four and five percent. And then these are kind of the maturities of all of them, so the treasuries were, you can see, the one million, one million, one million, or sorry, two million, two million, two million. And then most of the CDs we bought were in twenty twenty-seven maturity, and this shows the nine CDs at about two point two million, and the treasury is about nine. So we invested a good portion of the portfolio, probably, you know, close to ten percent over the last quarter, which is good, because rates have significantly dropped since then. We're currently seeing the five-year at like three point six, which is pretty low compared to where it was at the end of the quarter. This shows the interest received, you know, over the last quarter is close to a million dollars in interest, which is great. We had, you know, close to seven million dollars in maturities over the quarter, and like I said, we bought about eleven million, so we were net investors. The compliance, we're always, well, ideally, or not ideally, we're in compliance, everything is below its max weight. And again, we're not anywhere near the maximum, but you can see we have par value of about sixty million in U.S. treasuries. This is the compliance ratings, all is triple B or above, so there's nothing really to worry about, no real movements, no credit downgrades, which is good, so that looks good. One thing I think I forgot to mention, is it here? I gotta go all the way back. Is there? Oh, it was right there in compliance, isn't it? I was just going to mention again, market value, the bottom right, you see market value is above book value. Again, I think that's rare across cities, the fact that our, that our portfolio is up, given where rates have been. So that's nice to see. I mean, it's not, even if it was down, you know, we hold the maturity, so it wouldn't be of concern, but it's nice to, to be probably one of the few cities that is net positive. So this is where the LEAF is, we have very little in LEAF. That was historically a big investment for us, but the current apportionment rate is actually four and a half percent, so we're starting to see that really increase, and we're going to reach an inflection point pretty soon, I think, where LEAF, as rates drop, LEAF is going to kind of be slower to drop, and we're probably going to be shifting a lot of our assets from camp, which is our other short-term investment vehicle, which yields about five, a little over five percent right now. Eventually, those are going to cross, and we're going to be moving, you know, twenty million from one to the other.
Can I, can I jump in? That is something that, I know that we sit on some different boards, and people probably don't get a window to this, obviously, unless you really love watching public policy stuff, but moving, the dexterity moving between LEAF and camp is something that just other administrative or municipal bodies do not do. And the fact that in interest alone, that's six percent of our general fund is just earned by this movement, is just something you do not see in L.A. County. And that, I mean, that's really a credit to, to the way that you run this, it is a level of dexterity that we just do not see in public entities.
Thank you.
Or as Matt describes it, it's nice to see. It's unbelievable. It's like, oh, well, we didn't minimize, most people just minimize the risk because they own the maturity, but we made six million dollars.
So here's the thirteen-month cash flow analysis, you can kind of see the ebbs and flows of, you know, running a credit, running a net credit or debit. You guys are all very aware of this, and you have, we have budget meetings for this. Net change in cash, you can see, we actually started to level out, because in the last three years, you can see the P O B payment, which was due at the end of June. We have three years of that now, so, you know, it's, as I feel like I mentioned, every quarter I'm up here, we have some pretty predictable cash flows, for the most part. Here's our historic drawdowns, and why we kind of keep about a sixteen million dollar buffer, that's kind of our target, just to kind of make sure that we can weather the storm that you see, you know, in COVID, in terms of where we had a twelve-month cumulative downturn of about fifteen million dollars. The economic environment, probably the thing that's, I guess, most interesting and most novel each quarter. We have a big jobs report coming on Friday. If there, if it's soft, as it was the month before, that will kind of dictate, I think, what happens September eighteenth, which is when the Fed meets and decides whether to, that's not me, I don't think, whether to lower rates, and how much to lower rates. So I don't think it's an if, it's how much they're going to lower rates in September. So, it'll either be a quarter, quarter or a half percent, and we'll find that out September eighteenth, and I think that Friday will be a big kind of harbinger of what we're going to see there. And then this is just, this is the treasury, treasury yields through time. Like I said, that five-year, which is, looks to end at four point three, it's already down to three point six, so it is nice that we're pretty fully invested, there's not a whole lot of room to invest more, you know, based on how much liquidity we want to keep, and how much risk we want to take. This is our famous recession indicator that is showing, you know, blinking red, and saying that, you know, we have a recession coming. We'll see when that happens, but it's, you know, it sounds like the Fed is starting to think about lowering rates, which is the Fed thinking that we're going to have a pretty tough stretch ahead of us. And then unemployment and inflation, realized inflation is, has, has come back down quite a bit, and unemployment has also come back down to kind of pre-COVID levels. And I believe the last slide here is the five-year breakeven inflation prediction, and this is a market verified rate, or a market tested rate, I guess you could say, and that shows that, you know, we're pretty close to where the long-term target is, at least for what the market is anticipating. But anyway, if I can, if I have another presentation, I'm working on some things that, that will be kind of interesting, and change up the visuals a little bit, at least for the, this next time. Trying to keep everyone on their toes a little bit.
Awesome, sir. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any questions for Matt?
I'd also point out the thirteen-month cash flow piece, which is a sign, shows some of the economic strength that we have had over the last year, that I don't think we've, we saw, we're about three million dollars ahead from where we were at the same point last year, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Matt, you've done an incredible job. Mayor Protsam already touched on it, but the amount of interest income you brought to the city, I mean, there's really no one else in the city that's making that kind of direct impact on general fund revenues, so thank you for that. It's amazing.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to item thirteen.
Yes.
Can we move up eighteen, because we have a planning commissioner to report on that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, good idea. Mr. Heschler is here, that's right. Yeah, we'll move up eighteen. Multimodal transportation subcommittee update with Mr. Jay Heschler, planning commissioner. Yeah, if you're ready, Jay? Okay, great.
There's a presentation. Hi, everybody. Jay Heschler, El Segundo resident, planning commissioner, also assigned one of the members of the multimodal committee, subcommittee, and so we've got a little update on that today. Thank you. All right, that's perfect. So, little background, how we got here, why I'm here. In two thousand eleven, the city adopted the South Bay, you can leave those on, it's kind of sleepy in here. I know you guys have had a day. In two thousand eleven, the city adopted the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan. This was obviously before, a lot of you were here, certainly on the dais, but even maybe before somewhere in town. And by adopting this plan, the city committed to incorporating these bike lanes as streets were resurfaced. Made perfect sense, so the two thousand eleven master plan is here, it's broken down by different colors, the different colors mean different styles of bike lanes. And, you know, this was important then, but it's even more important now, as, you know, the amount of kids that are on bikes and e-bikes in town, the amount of golf carts that are in town, so the modes of transportation in our town have evolved, and so I think it's important to see that our city evolves with that. So, the city's made progress. I think in two thousand nineteen, we started installing sheroes on Main Street and on Grand. This updated map shows that class three routes, the heavy green lines on Grand and Main, so those were, those were installed. Manhattan Beach has done a good job of putting their stuff together. But last year, El Segundo Boulevard between P C H and Main Street was resurfaced, I think there was a Metro grant, grant that paid for that. It was resurfaced, and I was so excited to see that, but it was done, and there were no bike lanes, and in fact, the pilot parking program, which actually kind of slowed El Segundo Boulevard down, that was taken away, and so suddenly, we went from a fairly dangerous street to a really dangerous street for bicycles. So I made a stink, other people came forward to council, made a stink, and the council asked staff to put together a multimodal committee to make sure this doesn't happen again. Now, what does that mean to me? Really, it just means, you know, making sure Public Works does their job, making sure that as streets are resurfaced, things are done. So, working with Elias and Michael Allen and Kevin McGee and myself, we've established some goals. Certainly, there's a lot of documents to review, there's the, of course, the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan, the existing circulation element, the downtown specific plan, Smokey Hollow specific plan, and the local travel network that was installed last year. I'm still, I'm not sure I totally understand what that is, but it's there, and we're working with that. Another goal was to establish a process, so that we could look at the C I P projects, the capital improvement projects, where streets are being resurfaced, and just make sure that things are getting done, and increase communication and transparency between these departments. So, pretty simple goals, but really, to me, making sure that stuff gets installed the way they were supposed to. This is the local travel network that has been established, it doesn't necessarily follow the original bicycle master plan, but it's also all modes of transportation. You know, to me, the L T N is great, but it's just a bunch of signs, and I'm not sure anybody, it's changed any behavior, but I'm acknowledging that that is put in place. The good news is, since that El Segundo Boulevard was resurfaced, Public Works has installed several other bike lanes on the, predominantly on the east side of town. So now the big heavy red, pink lines represent new class-two bike lanes that are installed. Shout out to Elias and the team for doing that. You guys have probably seen these on Nash, El Segundo Boulevard, Douglas Street. We might want to consider lighting the tower green every time that we put bike lanes, too soon, sorry. Important thing I want to point out, though, on Nash. Nash Street is, it changes widths. Sometimes it's real wide, sometimes it's more narrow, and the design of the bike lane there accommodates that. There are sections that have stripes, and they're with green, but when it narrows down, it goes to sheroes on the ground, and so it's, it's a condition that notifies motorists that it's still a bike lane. It's not always consistent, but it, it works. And so, I point that out, because that's going to be precedent for something I want to talk about in a second. There are some gaps. So El Segundo Boulevard continues to be a gap. I see people riding bikes on there all the time, still. You know, there's a bike shop on El Segundo Boulevard, there's at least one brewery there, people come from the metro, you know, I wouldn't let my kid ride on that, and obviously, there's no bike lanes there now, so it would be great at some point to figure that one out. Rosecrans was always slated for a bike lane, and it works from P C H going west, that's actually established, but going east, you know, that's a, that's a challenging one. And then, of course, aviation continues to be a challenge, so things to consider in the future for, for Public Works. And another big one is establishing safe routes to schools. Even though there are purple dotted lines there, next to Center Street and the middle school, you know, it's Mariposa, it's Center, I don't think I'd let my kid ride on those streets, so that, those sorts of opportunities to get kids to school on bikes and something other than a car are still, still need to be solved. Coming back to El Segundo Boulevard, this may never happen again, or not until the next time it's resurfaced, but I do believe that El Segundo Boulevard can be solved for bike lanes. It would make the traffic calmer there, it can be done in a way that Nash Street was done, and mostly, it's about making that street safer, not just for bikes, but for pedestrians. I mean, you guys know, some of those buildings are three feet from the curb, and as a sidewalk, it's not even a safe place to walk. So having an opportunity to pull out the, make these lanes more narrow and put bike lanes in would, would solve it a lot. All right, so that's where we're at, it's just, there've been mostly observations to this point. Next steps would be additional council input as necessary. We will continue to work with Public Works and community development to understand, understand street resurfacing and look for opportunities. You know, another big thing is that Bike Master Plan was done in two thousand and eleven. The city has evolved, the way people get around has evolved, and it might be worth looking at the master plan in conjunction with all of town, so rather than just saying, all right, this thing was designed in two thousand and eleven, we got to do it, maybe it needs a little bit more forethought. Consider converting some of those bike-friendly streets into shero routes, especially near schools, and here's a big one, I think the city might consider publishing a map on the website that shows where the bike lanes are. So, for example, the route now from Nash that goes past the Chargers place, it goes all the way to Whole Foods. So if you were a parent, and your kid wanted to go to the Point or Whole Foods, they could go, they could take Maple, they could take Nash, and get there with, with bike lanes, and so being able to publish that information on the website, I think, would be a good thing to do. So, that's it, that's what we're working on, and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heschler. I got a question for you. You bike a lot of different cities, and you do work in other cities. Besides maps, what other wayfinders or directional stuff works where people, you know, if you're riding through a city and you're visiting, you know inherently, clearly through visual cues? You know, is there, are there other options besides like a map, where people are riding, and they could figure out, like, I'm here, I need to turn on Nash, that kind of thing?
Signs are good, but, you know, like the local travel network signs, I don't think they mean anything, and especially the more signs you have, the more clutter you get. Honestly, I think the only thing that works is paint on the streets. The motorist is doing his thing, hopefully not texting, the cyclist knows where to go, and whether that is sheroes, or in best-case scenario, actual paint on the ground, that's really the only way to do it.
This is more of a technical question, but you know, a lot of the auto-driving features with cars, Teslas, et cetera, do they acknowledge bike lane, right? They're just looking at paint lines, right? More or less.
I don't know Tesla.
Maybe, you know, but, but then I have another question for you, too, Mr. Heschler, but.
All right, go ahead.
No, I was just wondering, are those, when a car is in that lane assist, bike lanes are taken into consideration, yes? Mr. Allen shaking his head, yes?
Yes. I think I agree with him, frankly, striping on the roadway is the most effective way to communicate with the driver.
Got it, thank you. And then, a question on El Segundo Boulevard and the schools. Did your subcommittee, or maybe you, Mr. Sassoon, do you have an estimate of what that would cost to paint? It seems like we missed El Segundo Boulevard.
Okay, I'd like to make a few comments. With all due respect?
Yes.
I have a different opinion, and I hope you don't mind me sharing this. Before we got involved in restriping El Segundo Boulevard, which was a resurfacing project, we looked at the existing available width of roadway, and we hired the consulting firm that is specialized in that area. If we were to implement a bike lane in each direction, which consists of five feet in width, it would, it would only work if, if we had twelve lanes, and then two ten-foot wide lanes. In other, in other words, you would have a width of lane, ten foot, which would, in my humble opinion, would not be safe. In the opinion of the consulting firm, it would not be safe, it was not recommended, and that's exactly why we did not, if you would stripe this, this piece of roadway with bike lanes in each direction. That was a decision that was made, not only by myself, but with my colleagues, and I stand that decision.
Can I interject also, that involved a lot of issues with eastbound truck traffic leaving the refinery into a twelve- and ten-foot lane.
That involved a lot of issues with eastbound truck traffic leaving the refinery into a twelve- and ten-foot lane.
Right. So if, the only way to accommodate with a bike lane, with all due respect, is to buy more right-of-way, and, you know, it's very, very costly. And I do agree in one point that we do need to go back and look at that bike lane and get back with South Bay Hawk, and let them know what works, what doesn't work, what is practical, what is not practical. And maybe, rather than El Segundo Boulevard, then concentrate on Grand Avenue as an alternate, which I highly recommend. So it's not that we forgot about it, it's not that the mistake was made, it's just that it wasn't safe at all.
Got you. I got a question about the schools, the school area. Because to me, that's more pressing, given the e-bikes and everything else. What's the, what is the background?
Yeah, so we are engaged in a consulting firm for safe routes to school, and we are already accommodating what you indicated. We'll be working with the consulting firm in developing safe routes to school and including those intersections. So that's already been taken care of.
And that could include sheroes or something?
Yes, correct.
So one of the issues on Center Street is there's a lot of traffic with parent drop-off going to the middle school. So there's a lot of cars coming and going, and so it's very, and there's a lot of parking on that street. And that's the school that the majority of the kids are riding their bikes to, is the middle school. They're all e-bikes, they're riding their e-bikes. So we've been partnering with the school district to work with them on their inflow and outflow, because I know that they were putting a lot of structure around how their kids are coming and going and leaving their campus. We just need to make sure that this policy, whatever, this survey that we do encompasses their partnership so that we can have a holistic, so we don't come up with a policy that does not adhere to their policy, as far as entering anything. And I just, you know, we just, we just had this whole conversation about parking, and, you know, one of the things, you know, like I said, that along that Center Street, it's very hard to find this parking space because it's jam-packed, and there's cars coming and going. So those kids coming, they come down Pine, and they turn, and so a lot of times, they ride onto the sidewalk.
Right.
Because it is very dangerous.
Right.
So I just think we just need to make sure we look at that holistic partner with the school district.
Sure, sure. And one more thing, if I may, could you go back to slide number 12, if you don't mind? So the section of Mariposa toward the east, Mariposa, that's the heavy purple line. You see Mariposa, right? And then it becomes dash line? You see that? Okay. So the dash line, that basically is the same thing we could study. Mariposa, if we give up the parking, the park lane on either side of Mariposa, that could turn into a bike lane. In other words, there are, you know, pros and cons. So the reason I'm bringing this up is it's similar to Center Street. So sometime down the road, a decision is to be made. Are we going to keep on and holding on to the park lane? Or do we want to switch that into a bike lane? So that's what I wanted to make a point, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Heschler, anything further?
Yeah, I guess just to, Elias, thank you for that explanation of how El Segundo Boulevard came together. I guess, to me, the issue isn't whether or not it's right for bikes. You know, that route was on the adopted plan, and then the city made a decision to change it, change it, go off-plan, go off-script, and there was no process for discussing that. I understand there's safety issues. I understand that there are other competing forces besides just bikes. But I also work in cities all over America. I do this for a living, and there are different ways to skin that cat. And so my point is, is we never had a chance to discuss it. So, and I think maybe that's why this committee was set up, in order to have more transparency, which this is about. So for the consulting company that's going to be working on the schools, I'd love to be involved, or I'd love other people in the city to be involved with those, just to make sure that there is, that we're doing the best we can. Because we don't get a lot of chances to resurface streets, so.
So should we focus on Grand now? If that, if El Segundo Boulevard is kind of a done deal for safety reasons, then should we now start thinking about what can a bike lane on Grand look like, and how do we tie that in with the lanes we have?
Can I interject that part of, there's, and poor Elias, you are caught at the nexus of seventeen different committees that all touch bikes. There's two pieces to this that I think are worth tying in. One, the Smokey Hollow specific plan envisaged Franklin as a bike thoroughfare east and west to take traffic off of El Segundo Boulevard, and off of Grand, which is also a truck route. So it's envisaged for that, and I know the police department, who I think adversely, probably hidden from this because they don't want to hear the word "e-bike," they'll go into convulsions. When we browbeat the children about where to take their bikes when they come from McDonald's, we tell them to go on Franklin and not on El Segundo Boulevard. And there's a reason for that, right? And it's got some stop signs and those things. And when we envisage the local travel network, the idea of local travel work is if you're going 25 miles an hour or less, here are roads you can safely take without impeding traffic and having people shake their fist behind you. And that's what the different symbology is up there for the vehicles involved. And when we were at the transportation meeting at the COG, part of the sort of impromptu differentiation is, if you're biking in spandex, you can go on the big roads. If you're not biking in spandex, go on the local travel network. So I think that part of those things, Elias, comes down to you, that when we have these different committees that are all coming up with plans about how people get there, you're the one they all touch. So if there's points of deconfliction that need to be elevated to us, so we're not working at cross purposes, I think that's part of the way that we can get these things all in line. Obviously, we've sunk $900,000 into local travel network signs, not all directly our money, but as a region, and us piloting it. And if there's things that aren't working, if some of our heaviest users don't know what it means, or it looks like the signs are clutter, that's an important data point to go back to the COG with. But similarly, if there's ways to amend this, or make sure we appeal to it, or coordinate with the school district and say, you know, "When my kids are on their bikes, and they're definitely not wearing spandex, hopefully they're wearing helmets, I don't want them flying down Grand, ideally." So Elias, the pressure's on you.
The unique thing about our local travel network, when we set that up with the COG, though, versus, and the reason it was so easy in El Segundo, and we're the first in the COG, is because every street, with the exception of PCH and El Segundo Boulevard, is a local travel network street. And for that reason, I think it's not, it's like, well, everyone, everything's a local travel network street in El Segundo. But I want to get back to Franklin, because I didn't realize you're actually encouraging kids to take down. I have a business there. There are a lot of blind corners in Franklin, and very little, what's the word? Setbacks, thank you, and hills. So if, and I've seen kids flying through on electric bikes, and I would just say that if we're going to definitely dedicate Franklin, because I think the plan with Smokey Hollow plan is that Franklin is this vibrant walk street, bike street, art, green space, well, none of that's happened yet. And a big part of that's funding, because we haven't had the density bonus developments that we expected, probably in Smokey Hollow as of yet. And that is the vision, but we're not there yet. So I would just caution us, if we are sending kids down Franklin, I mean, I come down the alley from my building, right up on Franklin, and there's a mirror there for a reason, because you cannot see what's coming.
Yeah, I don't know that there is any structure sending kids down Franklin, other than...
I guess what I'm saying is, it would be nice, like, Grand, to me, and I've said this before publicly, feels like a recipe for disaster in a lot of ways. There's converging traffic, there's the skate park teen center with kids coming and going on skateboards and bikes. But we're sending kids, people, down Grand. That one seems just like we need to do something differently there. I mean, I can think back, many years ago, when there was a casualty in town in the Rite Aid parking lot, and God forbid we ever have anything like that happen again. I think we just, to me, Grand and Franklin need more, I don't know, protection or safety. That's not for me to say what that is, but it just feels like it's inadequate at this point.
Well, and I think that's exactly the point of revisiting the 2011 plan. Because, you know, Grand is what the city adopted, and so that's what was installed, and that may not be the right choice. So it needs to be looked at holistically, and where do those, where do the bike lanes belong?
Okay, and this is a receiving file, and Mr. Heschler, thank you very much. I appreciate, any other questions from the DIAS?
I would just, I would like to think we could think of one east-west thoroughfare on the west side of town, where everyone knows, whether it's Maple or whatever, there's going to be golf carts, there's going to be scooters, you know? And then if I'm driving, I'm going to avoid that street. It doesn't have to be every street, you know? But it'd be nice to have some type of plan, and if we have to look at something from 2011 and look at it again, I encourage us to do that, because it seems odd to have nice bike paths on one side of town where we don't have residents. But then, once you get to PCH, it's just kind of a free-for-all. You don't know where to go, it's not really laid out. So whatever we have to do to try to put our heads together and figure it out, let me know how I can help. So I'd like to get something done here, because it's just a matter of time. There's going to be more bikes, there's going to be more golf carts. So whatever we have to do to figure this out.
Okay. Michael, is there anything else you want to do to, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your commitment to the planning commission and this subcommittee.
Happy to be here.
Appreciate it. All right, in the spirit of moving things around on the agenda, we have a couple patient members of our community that have been sitting here since before public comments to talk about item 15. So unless anyone objects, I'd like to move up item 15 as well, please. Is anyone, anyone okay with that? Okay, sounds like that's good. Approval of the revised athletic field facility use and allocation policy. And I see Director of Wrexham Park, Ally Mancini.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Boils, Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel, and members of the City Council. In 2004, a field and facility allocation policy task force drafted an athletic field and facility use policy that outlined the city's procedure and allocation priority for the permitted use of athletic fields and facilities. Since its origination almost 20 years ago, the policy has undergone several revisions and modifications to meet the changing needs of the community. The most recent revisions and modifications have been drafted by a subcommittee that included department staff and two members of the Recreation and Park Commission. The draft document has been approved by the Recreation and Park Commission and is now before this council for review, feedback, and approval. Tonight, council will hear a summary of the most significant modifications that are being proposed in the amended document. As I mentioned, the youth sports council and athletic field and facility policy allocation was created in 2004 and serves to advise the Rec and Park Commission on a number of issues related to field allocation. All recommendations for changes to the policy are vetted through the Sports Council, the Rec and Park Commission, and ultimately, the City Council. The current members of the Sports Council include El Segundo AYSO, Babe Ruth, girls softball, lacrosse, Little League, inline hockey, the El Segundo Unified School District, youth volleyball, and the Eagles of El Segundo Youth Football and Cheer. Any new organizations that wish to join the council must apply for admission and must meet the following requirements. The organization must have at least 100 El Segundo resident players. The organization must have at least 75% El Segundo resident players of their total roster. And they must have a not-for-profit status registered with the state. The allocation policy includes all city-owned fields and facilities, as well as Raytheon Fields, Center Street School Fields, and Richmond School Fields as well. Based on the recent changes to the joint use agreement with the El Segundo Unified School District, additional athletic fields may be subject to this policy as well. The revised maintenance responsibilities for fields and facilities include several key components. First, due to the revised joint use agreement, the Richmond and Center Street fields are maintained by El Segundo Unified, but are scheduled by city staff. Raytheon Field continues to be maintained by Raytheon and scheduled by city staff. City fields are maintained on a large scale by the park maintenance team and by the city's contracted landscaper, Parkwood. However, language has been added to the policy that requires user groups of the ball fields to provide additional basic maintenance to the fields between games and after the final games of the day. You can see some of those items there. The proposed revised wet field policy states that fields may be closed for play in adverse weather conditions that rendered the field unsafe for play as determined by the park maintenance team. User groups can call the field closure hotline after 12:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and after 8:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday. The revised language states that user groups may now call for an update on field closures after 12:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays, with the understanding that field prep time after 12:00 p.m. may impact play schedules. The following changes to the policy have been reviewed and recommended for approval by the Recreation and Parks Commission. I'm going to go through each of these. Number one, the director of Recreation, Parks, and Library has the discretion to implement exceptions to the field allocation policy as they see fit. Number two, random field use audits will be conducted by RPL staff to ensure fields are being utilized as requested. Number three, all user groups must submit and maintain the following documents prior to opening day: insurance information, city business license, and workers' comp insurance. Number four, all user groups must submit city's special event application for any special event, such as opening day parades, end-of-league parties, et cetera. Fee waiver requests may be granted in accordance to the council's approved special event fee waiver procedure and max out at a 75% discount on city fees. Number five, field requests will be submitted on a quarterly basis, winter, spring, summer, and fall. Number six, we have added a one-year probation clause for all new members. And finally, we've made changes to formatting and language. Additionally, many discussion points have been raised in the last week as staff have begun finalizing fall field schedules. These recommendations that you see here have not been vetted through the Recreation and Park Commission due to timing constraints of tonight's presentation, but I would like to share them with the council for consideration. Number one, we already talked about user groups submitting and maintaining all required documentation. I'd like them to do that annually before July 1st to be eligible for field use. Number two, all sports advisory council member groups must have a decision-making representative at the biannual meetings with city staff. And this is because this is where we go over important changes, we talk about required documentation, and it's very, very important that we have a member of those organizations present to hear that information. Number three, sponsorship banners may not be placed on city property without the approval of the Recreation, Parks, and Library Director, and may only be displayed during the current season. This has come up as a discussion item recently about banners being, you know, hung on the city fences and what the timeline is, and et cetera, that they're staying passed when the season is over. So this just allows staff to kind of make sure we've got a handle on that when that's happening. And then finally, I'd like to add an additional statement to be included in the policy that reads that the intent of the field allocation policy is to provide equitable use of city facilities to support resident access to a variety of youth and adult recreational sports. That concludes my overview of updates to the proposed changes to the policy. Please note that this report is meant to provide an update on the city field and facility allocation, but a more in-depth report will be forthcoming to the council that will review the first eight months of the new joint use agreement that was approved by the council last year. So we'll get into a lot of these items in further detail at that time, and I'm planning to bring that back in October. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let's have a clarification question.
Yes.
When you said the Wrexham Park Commission hadn't weighed in, they hadn't weighed in on anything or just this?
Just that last slide, yes.
And then the second question is, is there a certain sense of urgency related to the timing of this one? Like, are any teams that are waiting, limbo waiting?
My understanding, in speaking with staff today, that the field allocation has been set for the fall, and that all user groups have been allocated the space that they requested, albeit some at different locations, different fields than they originally requested. That's my understanding.
So next up would be winter, January, season starts or something? Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, on the requirements, does it say that the nonprofit has to have you registered?
Yes.
For with the city of El Segundo?
The city of El Segundo.
Because the city of El Segundo, all nonprofits also have to have a business license, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's.
Correct. And we're actually chasing a lot of these documents right now, so I think we need to really get a better handle on that.
Can you explain how the audit would work and why you think that's needed? Are we concerned that there's reservations and then the field's not being used?
Yeah, that's one of, probably the top complaints that we get, is that... Yeah, that's one of the, probably the top complaints that we get is that, you know, the fields are so, you know, they're so in need. And I think what happens is at the beginning of the season, you know, the coaches and the leagues are doing their best to say, hey, this is the time we think we want. And a lot of them are good at then coming back and saying, hey, we actually don't need this space on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Go ahead and let someone else use it. But some don't. And then we get complaints from folks that the field is not being used, however, it's also not available. So we're thinking that we would just rovers or staff during the day would just go out periodically, you know, for each organization and just make sure that there's either players on the field or that they've relinquished that space back to us.
That was my question, Councilwoman Voldino. But years ago, when we rolled out REC one or, what is it, REC one? We, as part of a functionality piece, we, it was critical, we had this discussion up here that we would have access to field utilization and that also that we'd have reporting ability. So if AYSO has this field Wednesdays from seven thirty-nine, anyone could log in, any user, see who has the field and be like, there's nobody here. So it's self-reporting versus tying up city staff and spending the money?
Right.
To do audits. Have we, have we, where are we at with that functionality?
Yeah, so that functionality does not exist easily in this software. However, staff have been meeting with other potential vendors for comparable software that I think might serve us better just for the needs that we have. So we've already had a meeting with a vendor, we've had a couple of meetings with a vendor, and will likely be bringing back a recommendation to go out to bid.
That's a bummer. That predated you, but that was a selling point of the software and a business requirement that we had asked for.
Yes. Yeah, we've researched it multiple times. We've made calls.
Can our ERP software do this? I asked last time.
We can see it on the backside. Staff can see it. And so I don't know if that's where the confusion is when it was, but we can see it.
So we can't, but we can't provide any user, they don't have the ability to flip and switch, and any user can see the same thing, which is they, some, this group reserved this field.
They don't see that group. They see that the field is not available. So in other words, they would see that.
It's blocked, but they don't show it.
Correct. Exactly. And I think what you're asking for is which field, which group. And so this software, one of the software companies that we're looking into does do that.
So one other question. So say hypothetically, AYSO secures a bunch of space.
Sure.
And then they come back and say, and then other people are looking for that space, but it's blocked. And then AYSO, week, you know, week before that date, they come back and say, we're going to release that space.
Right.
What actions do we take to reach out to those people that had wanted it but were denied it because it was fake? Like, are we repushing out information so that people know that that space is now canceled? If it's just canceled in our system, then it doesn't do anything. Like, we need to be, have some type of mechanism to, you know, people can go on a wait list and so we can actually notify those people to say, hey, this field space opened up. Because that's the second piece that's missing.
Right.
And I'm hoping if you're, whatever your new system you're looking at, it has that, you know?
It does.
Additional, like, you can go on a wait list for this filled space, and if there's any opening, you'll be notified.
It does have that function, and that's something we're missing currently. So now staff, what happens is if we get fields relinquished or, you know, back to us, then the supervisor frankly, you know, goes back and looks at her requests. And I have to say, the user groups are all really good at kind of, you know, trading their space around. For the most part, it's getting a little more tricky. I think all of the programs are growing frankly at a pace that is going to be very challenging for us as we continue to move forward. But that's a function that we want in the new software, and the one that we've been looking at does have that capability. It's very user-friendly, very user-friendly.
I've got a couple of things here. First of all, on the audit thing, sometimes you don't need tech. Don't we have someone that is supposed to be responsible at Campus El Segundo for what goes on there?
Yes.
Isn't there a schedule in that individual's office that states exactly who should be on the fields that night?
Yes.
Is it difficult for that person to say, okay, this is all good, and this one didn't show up?
Yes. So, well, at campus, but not all the fields, right.
Okay, I'm just using that as an example, right?
Yes.
That's one. Those, you know, I used to be the president of girls' softball, so I can say this, okay? There was a lot of field squatting. We'd take all the space we could and then hope to fill it in.
Yes.
All right? That league has grown, though, so it's probably not the situation it was before. But I think it's the same thing. I just think certain things, we have manpower to do some of these things, to do a self-audit on it.
Correct.
And I think we need to utilize that as well. So I had a few other things within your report here. First one, slide number five, I'm glad we put this in here. The field duties for each of the user groups. This goes on in every single city except for this one. Every single Little League, all of them, they're in charge of maintaining the fields between their games and after the games, and it's the city's job, they do it before the first games of that day start. So I'm glad to see that on there. However, we need to make sure that we are holding enough field maintenance type of days to teach these user groups what they need to do and why.
Okay.
Okay, it shouldn't just be one at the beginning of the season and then it just washes away.
Multiple.
You know, there's a lot of people that are going to be in charge of that, so we just have to be able to be diligent in making sure they understand what needs to be done. And we need to be able to provide the equipment to do the job.
I think that's a good point, and when you mention that, I'm thinking also perhaps we have El Segundo media come out and do a recording of what's, so that they can access it that way as well. That's a great idea.
Understood. But I, the equipment is important as well, and we have some really outdated equipment, so let's figure out what that, what that needs to be done on there.
Got you.
So a couple of the questions I had, because I think one of the things, you know, the requirements or the way you get on the youth sports council, you get voted in or told you're the president of one of these organizations. That's how it is. I was on it, and that's how I got on. So I didn't even know it existed till I was told to go to a meeting, you know, a long time ago. So I think one thing to keep in mind is that is an advisory committee.
Right.
All right? One of the issues I have, you know, as I look through the committee makeup, for example, like, one of the first questions I have is I see El Segundo Unified School District in there.
Correct.
Everything we do with them is satisfied within the joint use agreement, right?
Correct.
So why would someone from the district be here to vote on whether or not other people should be part of the youth sports organization? And not even just them. Every person in there, they're conflicted out because they're all vying for the same space. I think a lot of the field allocation stuff should be part of the Park and Rec Commission, personally. Fine for them to make recommendations, but in the end, let's be honest here, everybody's fighting for the same piece of the pie here.
That's right.
So I think that's something we need to look at. And there are representatives I know that are on the youth sports commission that are also on the Park and Rec Commission.
Right.
Let's, it doesn't necessarily look great when we do things like that. So that's one thing I would like to take a look at. And I'm not saying the school district shouldn't be on it. I'm just saying that everyone has the same situation of you're a little bit conflicted and the district stuff is all taken care of in joint use. So I think maybe that's just something that's been going on for a long time.
Correct.
And it maintained that way. Is it the athletic director that's who's on it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's voting now.
Voting.
It was Chevy before.
It was Chevy before. And at the last meeting, Kim Lynn's also attended.
Oh, okay, nice.
The chief business officer, just to explain in, you know, great detail what the policy would be regarding the schools opening up their fields to the user groups.
All right, so I got another one. I'm not sure it was on your slide, but it was in the staff report. It had to do with sports-specific field designation and use.
Okay.
Okay? And I know I'm opening up a big can of worms right here, but I'm going to open them anyway. Stevenson Field is dedicated, says hardball, baseball only.
Correct.
Okay, so I know we have light problems and field problems, right? I know we're trying to fit in other sports. For example, I know Friday nights is now Chargers flag football, which, by the way, the fastest-growing sport there is.
Correct.
I think there's a hundred and thirty girls that went out for the team or something like that at the high school, something crazy like that. So it is one of the fastest-growing sports, and we do need to allocate space for it. That being said, we're needing to find other spaces. If we allow soccer and everything else to be played on Brett Field, why do we not allow it to be played on Stevenson?
I think that's a good policy question.
Yeah, is it going to tear up the field a little bit in the outfield? Yes. Do we need to protect the infield? Yes. I'm just saying, if you're in a field, if you're in a space crunch, you know, maybe it's the six use, maybe it's the seven use. I wouldn't put the high school kids running around on Stevenson Field, but if there's a space problem, I just think we have to be careful by saying that that one field, which gets used by Babe Ruth and high school baseball, that's all it's for all the time when we have a field crunch. If there was more, if there was ways to utilize some of the school fields in lieu of Stevenson Field, I'd be all for it. I'm just saying that I think that's an old-school designation.
It is.
And just the participation sports in this city have changed dramatically, and we need to find some space. So sometimes the answer is right there as well. I'm not saying we should do it. I do think that it's something that we should consider, though, as we start looking at space going forward. All right? And that's all I have.
Lance, I could just interject on that, too.
Yep.
I had a discussion with the city manager this morning. I know we're in the middle of the rec park renovations, and we're going to be looking at the Stevenson Field and Brett Field in particular. It might be something for us to consider, doing artificial turf on one of those fields just so we can get extended use.
That was something, I mean, Councilman Nickel brought that very idea multiple times. Why are we not using Stevenson for, something other than baseball? And I thought we looked at, we looked at artificial.
We looked at it very briefly, but there was kind of a consensus that we wanted to try and stay natural, but I think that was, you know, six months, almost a year ago. I think, given what I've seen in the last month or two, I think we're going to be in a position where we're not going to get to choose. I think we're going to have to open that field up.
But I think that you can, yeah, you can open the field, and you can open it as grass. I mean, you know, we do that with good drainage and good maintenance, you can open it as grass. But I think that there's, I mean, there's other big baseball fields in town. They're not, there's no magic fairy dust. I mean, there's a lot of school district facilities that are somehow magically evaporated out of this. Like, where's the middle school stuff? I mean, where's the football field?
Right. So we actually do have access.
Where's their baseball field?
We have access to those fields as well. The issue usually is lighting. So a lot of those fields don't have lights. The middle school has no lights. So that's where we're running into a challenge with that.
And for AYSO, as soon as the clocks turn back, they're done. You're done at like four thirty-five, right? It just gets darker early, so it's tough to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, for Stevenson, I mean, there's another field that people can play baseball on. We can use that for soccer.
I had another item I was talking about. The one that stood out for me, Ms. Mancini, in light of what happened recently with AYSO on Friday nights.
Yes.
And getting kind of thrown a curveball, where they historically have had Friday nights, and they shared it with the seven-on-seven, which I used to play on and get a butt kicked by people like Matt. But they shared that with AYSO, and then in the eleventh hour, more or less, AYSO was told not to expect that because the Chargers were using that. That was a decision that we made, that you made, I should say.
That's correct.
You specifically. I struggled a little bit with the discretion piece based on that. Not that that would happen again, but I think that this is such a coveted, I mean, this discussion is such a coveted thing that whether it's youth sports council or Wrexham Park, I think once a policy's set, it should be followed. I don't think we should be taking our largest, as an example, our largest registered sports group and tell them they can't have fields on a Friday when historically they've had that.
I understand.
Unless something materially changed, like their registration dropped or, so I struggle with that discretion piece a little bit.
I understand.
And I had a question about the sponsorship banners, just how you implement that. Would that be, they would say, here are all the sponsors we have, who we've had before, here's who's re-upped, and then your department would say, looks good, by the way, have them down by this date?
Exactly.
Okay, just want to get some insight there.
Exactly.
But based on what, I'd like to hear what others have, but based on what Councilmember Drew said and my thoughts, does it make sense to bring this back, given that there isn't a strong sense of urgency on this topic?
I'm fine to do that.
I don't, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, but that was more of just.
Well, we can discuss it when we get the data about how the joint use, what user groups are using certain areas, and then maybe we can open up conversations about other fields.
Sure.
Not to distract the conversation, but there was an asterisk about the Raytheon Park being maintained by Raytheon beginning nine, two thousand and twenty-four on your PowerPoint.
It's already, it's currently being maintained. That was just an error.
It was added to this.
It was added to, yes, to the policy.
Okay, they've always maintained that.
Right. But it wasn't called out.
We don't maintain that. They're maintaining that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, on the discretion, I agree. It's, it can be challenging, but I think if it's going to be either of those bodies, I think it has to be the Rec and Park Commission. I think as Councilman Drew mentioned, it would be a little bit tricky to have the youth sports groups voting on an exemption.
All right, a hundred percent agree with that. I don't have the experience being on the council that he has. That was another quick aside, there's some inconsistencies as council and commission, but is it a, it's just a minor thing?
Well, so it, right, so it's kind of moved towards being, it's called the youth sports council. I've heard it both ways, but I think perhaps, given, you know, some of the discussion we've had today, it probably needs to be changed to maybe committee.
Youth sports advisory committee would be great.
Or advisory. I defer to the city attorney for his recommendations on that.
Semantics.
Final thing, but I want to ask the city attorney if I can actually weigh in on this one, which is related to how we're calculating sports parade costs, for example. Is that, is there something, I thought I read something in there related to fee recruitment or no?
Oh, so basically, we're just making it clear in the policy that if these groups want to have these types of events, they would need to go through the special events permitting process and pay the fees. They could apply for a special event fee waiver. However, the council-approved policy maxes at seventy-five percent discount.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's what I would like to see. I don't know how my colleagues feel.
It's coming back, it's coming back in.
No, no, not that. Hold on, let me finish. The math, Mr. George?
Oh, the joint use.
The math that we were told is like twenty thousand dollars. And so the five, when you do the math on twenty thousand dollars, assuming like a hundred dollars an hour, that's two hundred man-hours, women, man-hours, people-hours. It just, it doesn't pencil out to me, and so I can't help but think that other burdens are being factored into that calculation, like lieutenants and captains that have to be on command anyway. But I would like to see the math on how that's being calculated.
And specifically the number.
Anything that, like, whenever, be it Kiwanis, Main Street Festival, we have a policy, but what's the rationale for the math? We have to, in good faith, be able to say, yes, that is the cost of our services, not other people that would be on staff anyway.
And we have all that information. Now, it'd be easy to bring back.
Yeah, we've got that for each event. We get estimates from PD, from public works.
I mean, I think it's just a one-time agreement. Like, you show us what the rationale with the finance department is of how that math is done for all the events, and I think we could do it with a one-item thing, but it's just.
I think you bring up a good point, Mayor, and we had that with the art walk recently, where we were going to charge the art walk, you know, ten hours of public work staff time, but I knew they were going to be out in the morning, and then they were going to go back to the yard, and then they were going to come back, and we had this exact discussion. And we had this exact discussion, so I think it's a good point and something for us to consider.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to turn over my colleagues in terms of how they would like to address this item that's before us.
When are you coming back with the update on the joint use agreement?
Second meeting in October.
Oh, will you just bring it back then?
Anyone opposed to deferring until after we get the joint use data back?
That's a good idea.
Okay, and how, and then, when you get that, when you bring that back, would you also report to us on how it's going with the transition, now that we have additional fields available built into our joint use agreement?
Right.
And the ease at which user groups are being able to work with the school district to get that done?
Yes, and things that we've kind of identified here in the last week or two, yes, I did. There is some important information I want to include in the next report.
Okay, great.
And then just real clarification, I know the school district implemented a new system to help monitor their system. Is that the system you're looking at, or a totally different system?
Completely different.
So, we just want to make sure that if we are going to be using their filled space, that those systems talk or communicate. Because, you know, having two different systems management, it makes it more problematic. So, whatever solution we come up with, make sure we're having a conversation with the district to understand what their system is.
Right.
So, if that's part of our deal, so that there's communication between the two systems.
As much as we can do that, we definitely will, but I will keep you all apprised.
All right, great progress, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're onto item thirteen, memorandum of understanding between the City of El Segundo and El Segundo City Employees Association, American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Local thirty-five nineteen bargaining unit, and amendment to the city contributions for California Public Employees Retirement System Medical Premiums. And Mrs. Reddick, our Director of HR, is here to present, hi.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I'm very pleased this evening to bring to you for your consideration. In agreement with our City Employees Association, this bargaining unit represents about sixty-seven employees, and it has a wide cross-section of jobs that are represented in it. There are jobs that hit almost all departments citywide. There's a large concentration in our public works department. We have library, recreation, and some city hall positions within this unit. This contract expired September thirtieth of last year, and we have been at impasse since November of last year. After we reached impasse, the group decided to seek representation from AFSMI. And after that happened, we met, the city negotiator and myself met with the members on their negotiating team. And shortly after that, we were able to reach a tentative agreement. And so that tentative agreement will have a fiscal impact in this year of eight hundred and fifteen thousand. But overall, for the term of the contract, which is three years and nine months, it's about two-point-four million dollars. So, the, um, some of the terms of the contract, financial terms, there is a signing bonus per member of five thousand and fifty dollars. The five thousand and fifty dollar amount represents increases to medical insurance that they would have received had they had a contract when their other one expired. So as of October first, the difference in medical is a hundred and fifty dollars per month right now. And it also includes, because they didn't receive any salary increases during the time we were at impasse, it also includes a factor which is equivalent to about a two percent increase for the member. So that's where the five thousand and fifty dollars comes from. There are other salary adjustments, there's three percent July first of twenty twenty-four, so it is retroactive about a couple months now. And then three percent again July of twenty-five, and two percent in July of twenty-six. One of the things that we have been striving to do with all of our labor units is to make all the health insurance, all the medical, the same. So with that, this group will immediately go from sixteen hundred to seventeen fifty per month for CalPERS health insurance. And then, with the other groups, it's a fifty dollar increase each year of the contract. Their dental and vision and life is now going to be consistent with everyone else, it's one eighty-four twenty-five a month. It used to be one thirty-five, or it currently is one thirty-five. Their basic life insurance will go up from thirty thousand dollar coverage to fifty thousand. There's a boot allowance increase for some classifications from a hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty dollars per year. There are provisions for Class A and Class B driver's license, seventy-five dollars a month or fifty dollars a month. There's bilingual pay, this unit did not have bilingual pay in the past. There would be a test required to achieve the bilingual pay, it's seventy-three dollars and forty cents per pay period. Vacation leave, they will be on the same vacation leave schedule as most of the units, which includes one extra hour of vacation per month. With that one extra hour of vacation per month, the city is going to institute a hard cap, and there can be no more accrual, up to two years is the max accrual. There is going to be a cap on the sick leave of six hundred hours, which is consistent with other units. And then addition of one calendar day per year of personal leave day. Other things that were included in this, this tentative agreement is an alternative work schedule of a four-ten. So that would mean the employee would work four days per week with four ten-hour shifts. That's an alternate work schedule in addition to the nine-eighty that they have. It's not an automatic schedule, it needs department head approval. There's also, consistent with other units, acting time that someone served in a classification, if they're actually promoted to that classification, the time served would count against their probation. The retiring dental and vision, consistent across the board, and retirees could remain on the city plans if they are enrolled when they retire and if they continue to pay the premiums. And then we do have revision of the leave cash-out process, so this will now also comply with the IRS doctrine of constructive receipt. So with this, there are, there are two resolutions. One to approve the memorandum of understanding, and then a second one that's required by CalPERS, which includes, for their medical amount, increasing it from sixteen hundred dollars a month to seventeen fifty a month. And that medical amount is for actives and retirees. So retirees of the City of El Segundo would receive the seventeen fifty maximum contribution if they were enrolled in a CalPERS plan.
Great, any questions for Mrs. Reddick? Just wanted to congratulate you, I mean, when, how long have you been here, three years?
Three and a half years, and this is our last contract.
And you got, I think this is the first time since I've been at council since twenty sixteen, we've had all seven collective bargaining units in agreement, and all of them with arbitration agreements in place. So, great work, I hear you're taking some time off.
Yes, I am.
You're not going to check email? Don't check email.
And they've all are on the same medical plan.
Same medical, same dental, vision, life.
So now we can actually go and do a better job about soliciting and negotiating a medical plan that's benefiting everybody. So everybody's on the same, so it's very comprehensive, it's easy to execute, easy to operate, and easy to go negotiate. So congratulations, I think this is a job well done.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I'd like to congratulate them. I mean, CEA, this is historically been the most difficult one to work with, just because of the diversity of the different roles within the organization. And it's really, I mean, this is our second time that, that we've sat with a contract with them, and the last one took seven and a half years. And so, it takes a lot to come back to the table, and I really think this, this shows a great deal of conciliatory behavior and professionalism on their part. I'm, I'm just really happy to see it.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Reddick, it looks like that's it for comments. Okay, so, the first one is the, Mr. Vasquez is going to read the title for the resolution, and then one of us will move approval and then we'll vote on that.
Sure, if you want, Mayor, I could read both resolutions, if you'd like to take them all together, sure.
Thank you.
First resolution is a resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo City Employees Association. AFSMI, Local three-five-one-nine bargaining unit is available for a vote, that's number one. Number two is a resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and innuents with respect to a recognized employee organization, zero-zero-three. El Segundo City Employees Association is available for a vote.
Okay, would someone like to move? All right, first look with the first?
Second.
Drew with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero, awesome. Okay, we also just need a motion to approve the appropriation of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars for the general fund reserves to the various fiscal year twenty twenty-four, five salaries and wages budget expenditure accounts.
So moved.
Thank you.
First, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations, thank you. Thank you, everybody that worked on that. Much appreciated, and like Mayor Protem said, thank you to CEA employees. All right, next up, also, Mrs. Reddick, second amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, a resolution adjusting associated salary range and accompanying budget appropriation.
Thank you. The city manager's performance evaluation was held during closed session on July second and August twentieth, and then also on August twentieth, there was negotiations regarding the salary. At this point in time, I'm bringing forth an amendment to extend the city manager's employment agreement for an additional year and to also provide a four percent base salary increase to the city manager position. With that, we are also adopting a salary range. The four percent increase is incorporated in the second amendment to the city manager's contract along with the one-year extension. There is also a slight modification to the amount of life insurance coverage, modifying that from five hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. A resolution is required for CalPERS for the salary range.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on this from council colleagues? No, okay, just one, one comment would be, just like with every different group that we look at, collective bargaining unit, we benchmark where every, where employees are, the median, the mean, relative to our peer groups, and we did, we took on that same thorough practice with this one. All right, so first, we have a motion to approve the second amendment to the city manager's employment agreement to provide a four percent base salary increase and extend the term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Thank you, we have a second?
Baldino, Baldino seconds.
Baldino second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Uh, Mr. Vasquez, would you please read the resolution title?
Certainly. A resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, modifying the annual salary range for the city manager job classification is available for a vote.
All right, we have a motion, I'm sorry, yeah, we need a motion to approve this one too.
Baldino, so moves?
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. You were yes on that one, right, Carol? Okay, thank you. All right, next one is to appropriate fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-one to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to associated expenditure accounts, I'll move approval, do we have a second?
Baldino, seconds?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-zero. Item, okay, we did fifteen, item sixteen, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sixteen, first reading of an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code titles seven, nine, and ten to establish camping and associated regulations on public property and rules of conduct for the El Segundo Public Library.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you is a first reading of an ordinance amending various titles of the El Segundo Municipal Code. A very brief roadmap, which should not lead, lead you to believe that there are a ton of slides, but, um, briefly, there'll be legal background, precedent, new precedent, the guts of the ordinance, and then, uh, next steps. First is regarding prior legal precedent, just to set the table, um, the prior precedent was from the Ninth Circuit, very expansive, not just California, I think, Montana, Alaska, Hawaii, Guam. Under that precedent that had been binding under a case, Martin versus City of Boise, the whole thing was that Boise's prohibition against sleeping in public violates the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment when homeless individuals have no access to alternative shelter. And the upshot is that cities cannot enforce this type of ordinance unless they had sufficient shelter space in the jurisdiction. The new precedent, um, based on the US Supreme Court's ruling as of June twenty-eighth of this year, in a case Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson, overturned this prior precedent and established that criminal enforcement of anti-camping ordinances does not violate the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment. And the court found that Grants Pass's ordinance generally, of general applicability, prohibits conduct for all persons and not any specific status offending, affecting some person. The upshot for cities is that they're no longer required to have sufficient shelter bed space for the unhoused prior to enforcing these types of ordinances. Notably, the court, the Supreme Court in Grants Pass touted Grants Pass's light-touch approach to enforcement. Notably, the plaintiffs had not been subjected to a stay-away order barring them from city property or any criminal enforcement, despite bringing this matter all the way to the Supreme Court. The court also observed Grants Pass's multifaceted approach to the homelessness crisis that aims to protect the rights and property of the homeless population and that provides a homeless community liaison that can offer information about assistance programs and other resources. This is analogous to city efforts regarding the Patches Program that was presented a couple months ago, spearheaded by PD, but involves various city departments and is a all-hands effort to, to carry out this multifaceted approach. As far as the ordinance itself, um, the camping prohibition is modeled on Grants Pass. What's prohibited is camping at a campsite. Where it's prohibited is any public property. Camping is defined as setting up or remaining at a campsite. The key definition of campsite is any place where bedding, sleeping bag, or other material used for bedding purposes, or any stove or fire is placed, established, or maintained for the purpose of maintaining a temporary place to live, whether or not such place incorporates the use of any tent, lean-to shack, or any other structure, or any vehicle or part thereof. There are exemptions to the prohibition where otherwise authorized by the municipal code or via city council resolution with a public interest finding. Outside of camping, the ordinance would also impose prohibitions related to the public right-of-way. The prohibited activity would be lying, sleeping, or storing personal property. Where this would be prohibited are public sidewalks, public streets, public alleyways, or other public rights-of-way. There is an option for the council to impose later on, if you will, additional time, place, manner regulations. So, you could include location buffer prohibitions to say, for example, you can't do these prohibited activities at these places, um, if they're within five hundred feet of a school, an open space, a major transit stop. So that, that's an additional variable for the council to consider, but if not, it would apply without those additional time, place, manner regulations. As far as due process, um, we have a notice requirement where before there's any campsite removal cleanup, the city must post a notice of any campsite removal on the site at least twenty-four hours before removal. And I would request, should there be any motion to, to approve for first reading, in addition in section three of the ordinance to section seven dash eight dash five of the municipal code, to add an exemption, an exception to the notice where there's an immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare. For example, let's say there's a fire and there's an immediate cleanup needed. Obviously, notice wouldn't be feasible, so I'd like to just build in that, that exemption for those types of exigent circumstances. And following the removal, um, there's a process for the reclamation of personal property and city storage. So, um, upon campsite removal and, and city retention of, of personal property, it would be stored up to thirty days. That would be unless, um, property is evidence of a crime, for example, a weapon or, or drug paraphernalia. But otherwise, individuals that can prove ownership can reclaim custody of their property within that thirty-day window. As far as enforcement, there are a variety of, of civil and criminal tools. We have civil fines available, the set, schedule has been set under resolution number five-one-zero-four. First, second, third violation, as you see, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, this is all within one year. There's an option for criminal misdemeanor enforcement, which is up to six months in county jail and/or a one-thousand-dollar fine. We have the option to go with nuisance enforcement, we could have a finding of a nuisance and accordingly have a hearing officer impose an order. We could also go to state court for a civil injunction to enforce mandates required by our code. The multi-phase approach is also a feature of Grants Pass that, um, that was noted by the Supreme Court and as part of their light-touch to enforcement. So how it works is, it sort of ramps up. So you start with the citations, and upon the third citation, the, um, the citie can be banned from the specific property. So if it's a specific park where there are habitual problems, they could be banned for thirty days. Thereafter, if they appear within that thirty-day window and there is another violation, then there could be criminal enforcement for trespass. So, um, that multi-phase approach is, is a, a specified option for, for PD to, to consider. And that phase approach was, was something that was noted by the Supreme Court as, um, as a prudent practice. But nevertheless, there are these different arrows of enforcement in the city's quiver. As far as cleanup, and this is code cleanup, not encampment cleanup, but some, some minor sort of, just to reconcile some existing language in the code, there was, uh, there's an expansion of the current ban on overnight, habitation in vehicles, a ban on specific public property that's currently in place from ten PM to six AM in specified locations. We would broaden in the application of this to vehicle habitation from those hours in all public property locations. Along the same lines, there are currently bans on camping, which is undefined. So this would marry, and this would add cross-references that are currently in the rules as to beaches and parks for prohibitions on camping, to have a cross-reference to the anti-camping language that we are adding to the code. As far as library rules and, and, um, for those that may be curious as to why library features are, are being included in this exercise, there are issues related to homeless individuals and. there are issues related to homeless individuals and certain activities and behaviors that relate to the subject matter that have been acutely experienced in the city's library. And what the code currently provides for as far as the library is the establishment of the city library. That's in the code. There's a resolution that establishes the library board pursuant to state law. This goes back to 1990. And state law also allows the library board to adopt rules necessary for the administration, government, and protection of the library. And pursuant to this authority, the library board has already been adopting various iterations of these library rules of conduct. The inclusion of the library rules into the code, where this would formalize the authorization and direction to the library board to adopt the rules, is that this would add another layer of enforcement, given the tools in our code. Basically, the ones that were previously cited as to anti-camping as far as citation, criminal misdemeanor liability. Those would also apply to violations of the library rules. This would provide a belt-and-suspenders approach layered on top of already-existing enforcement tools in the library rules. And as to the library rules in themselves, the library board will be considering updates to its rules of conduct to consider aligning with other jurisdictions' library rules. For example, Santa Monica, Long Beach, that specifically prohibit sleeping in a public library. So libraries are, offer a lot of services to folks as far as reading, you know, multimedia education, but they're not public places for sleep. So that would be another feature that the library board will consider as prohibited conduct in its library rules. As far as next steps, proposed is a first reading tonight. A second reading would be proposed at the next meeting on September 17th. The ordinance, if approved, would become effective 30 days after adoption. There'd be coordination, planning, strategizing with the Patches Group. And as just mentioned, the library board will be considering analogous updates to its library rules. And available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. I'm going to turn over to my colleagues for questions or comments.
Joaquin, can you run us by that amendment you're proposing? Is it for Section 7-8.4, or we're talking about removal of campsites?
Yes, so the removal, the proposed additional language would say that there has to be 24 hours notice posted on the site. So typically, it would say, hey, you have 24 hours to remove your personal property. We're going to come in and clean the space. We would add language to say, unless the city manager or designee determines that exigent circumstances require cleanup.
With a life, health, and safety issue, we're not going to wait 24 hours if we determine it to be a risk.
If there would have to be an imminent threat to the public health and safety, that would require that notice not being provided.
Okay.
And then, Joaquin, you know, I know Governor Newsom also issued some mandates. Does this align to those mandates?
Sure, yeah, so on the heels, about less than a month after the Supreme Court's ruling came down, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order 9-1-24, which directed state agencies to basically use an existing Caltrans encampment cleanup model and apply that throughout the state to address encampments based on the Supreme Court's guidance. As to local agencies, cities, encouraged them to adopt policies consistent with that, with those rules for the state. So we're definitely aligning with that. And specifically also as to cities, he did encourage cities to apply for a little over $3 billion in Prop 1 dollars that is competitive grant funding that the city and, you know, regionally can be sought to assist with efforts for cleanup and homeless services.
So my other question is, on the enforcement, like, we have some punitive, you know, fines and for if they don't adhere to it. But I mean, realistically, you know, if they're homeless, you really don't have the means to pay any punitive fines. And it just kind of seems opposite of what, you know, we should be trying to help. And so I just want to make sure that we're not going to be issuing citations, but we're actually trying to help people get into some type of shelter.
I think that's a great point, and that's why we included the sort of phased-in approach where before going to criminal citations, and I mean, before going to criminal enforcement and even civil citations, there's outreach, we have the community liaison that provides information locally, regionally, about services that can be offered to assist before anything punitive can be imposed. So I think, I wouldn't be speaking out of school if I, if I say that the Patches approach, I think, is modeled on that sort of assistance. But if need be and consistent with the Supreme Court, we can criminally enforce. We can cite and enforce even if there aren't sufficient shelter beds within our specific jurisdiction.
Yeah, just Sunday or Monday, there was a woman, and it's hard to tell, she was like out cold on Grand Avenue, right off Main Street, nestled around a pole. And so now, in that situation, we'd have the ability to move them along and cite them if they choose to not move, right? But to your point, get them help. So the thing that was encouraging for me, I said it on the Homeless Patches meeting, I don't know, Thursday or Friday, whenever that was, and it was great to see every department represented with your leadership chief. And the, it's like, I remember when I rode around with Marco Lemus, when he was the homeless officer years ago, is that the amount of touches they have to do to get people on board with the service. But I also learned, I didn't know this, you probably knew this from the cog, Chris, is that there are home, there, there's housing available in Gardena that we have access to, and that was news to me, that's great. The Soul Housing, and that there's some other stuff available as well, so that, that's really encouraging. And let's see, I had one other thought about that, but I guess that's it. I mean, so any other questions, comments for my colleagues on this one?
Just a few quick ones, and some of these are mildly technical, but 7-6-1 on RVs. Do people have the ability to permit to have an RV if they are working on their house or something like that and they have an RV? Is there an overnight permit for that, or is there a blanket prohibition? Or is a judgment called by that? I know there's a, there's a, there's a dispensation if the vehicle's disabled.
We have a permit process here in town.
A permit process for having your oversized vehicle out there, but this does not allow for sleeping in it? So if there's...
From those hours, it's strictly prohibited under the code. I'm not aware if there's any separate administrative permitting for that. With that said, similar to the city councils...
I mean, we've had some abuse of that, right? We had people move into their RV while they were doing like a six-month renovation of their house, and that was problematic. There were hoses and wires and the whole nine yards. But I mean, we may, we may just, so sometimes you want to caution against neighbor-on-neighbor, I hate your RV activity.
Well, if it's on their property, they can live, they can sleep in it, but if it's on the street, they can't.
So that's what I'm asking, like, are there scenarios that we may want to, in the future, portend a carve-out for that? Number two, in 785, when we dispose of unsanitary things, I think the vast majority of things we find in an encampment, most people would find to be unsanitary. Some of the things, however, may be, you know, the only possessions of that individual. And I'm thinking about soiled sleeping bags and things like that. We obviously don't want responsibility for cleaning. But I would hope when we do policies on the department of how we maintain or store those things, that we are, we have some sort of guidelines for good judgment on things that we might find to be unsanitary, maybe keep personal possessions for that individual.
But could we not create a policy where, like, if we find a sleeping bag that's soiled, you can check out a new one, like, when they, like, so that replace it with a new one? So it's, so that we don't have to store something that may be invested with something? And that we just have, if someone comes to claim, hey, my sleeping bag was taken, we can say, okay, here's a new one.
I think that's probably within the departmental guidelines for enforcement, but I just wanted to highlight that, that in the nature of, or in the name of sort of giving humanity and dignity to individuals in tough straits. Also, the 30 days of destruction time, we'll hold it for 30 days. How do we, what's our guidance on that if the person is incarcerated? If we take them, and if we do take them in, it's their third or fourth offense, and they go in for a few months? Or they're mentally unstable and they're, they're taken into state care? What do we do with their possessions then?
I'm glad I stayed. I anticipated some questions on this. On the first thing related to the booking of soiled property, typically if we arrest somebody, we will ask the person, hey, does this belong to you, is this valuable to you? If you want to throw this away, we can, that kind of stuff, that will happen. So that's kind of like a judgment call discretionary, as you mentioned. When it comes to whether somebody's arrested for a long term, we have the ability to hold that in safekeeping if we can. But again, if it's something that's completely soiled, it'd be unsanitary and unsafe. We cannot book that anywhere, so we'd have to throw it away after 30 days. Yeah, there's nothing that will allow us to keep it, because there's nowhere for us to keep it, to preserve it safely.
Very well, thank you, Chief. Two historical call-outs that I just had to note while we're talking about our park policy. Section 1014B, we are specifically prohibiting people from driving livestock in our parks.
It's about time.
Just saying, if we, if we're in the spirit of amending things, is that, is that something we still need to have? And also, 1014L, we don't allow for playing games in the park with a ball. If we're doing cleanup, I'm just saying, those things are all in there. But the last one, so that's, that's just a few, you know, if you're redlining things, that there might be some things that we no longer, unless we have people driving cattle to the park.
Go yoga, what about go yoga? You don't want to include that?
So there we go. Maybe we do keep it. But the other piece I would ask is, is there any wisdom to, I know we love pilot programs, but we have existed without these sort of camping prohibitions for 100-plus years and done just fine. Now, we're in a sort of a unique period of the sort of epidemic of unsheltered homelessness that we're trying to prevent. Is this something that we want to permanently change our municipal code on? Or is it something we would say for five years, we want to prohibit these activities? And then after that, we can go back to living life with fewer rules, as we seem to for the first century of our existence?
I guess, why, I, what would be your concern on the downside?
Well, some of these things, you end up with dated rules. Like, you can't drive cattle in the park, or you can't throw a ball in the park, or you can't throw a ball that weighs more than 10 ounces on the beach. Like, these are all rules that we have, that are probably, they seem silly now, but they live, you know, for time immemorial. So is there, I'm not saying I want to create a whole process to revisit this. Maybe a council down the road just does a big house cleaning and says, hey, we want to, you know, camping is fine. But I was just throwing it out there for consideration that this is a unique period of this sort of scourge of unsheltered homelessness that we're trying to address, and I don't think it's going to last forever.
Well, I hope you're right, but I think of this as just one more tool we can give to our service to help address this issue in a more holistic fashion. So even if we were to sunset this, I think if it became a problem, we could just address it at that time as opposed to saying, we're going to arbitrarily say, after five years, everything's going to be fine, and we don't need this tool anymore. It seems a bit counterproductive. I think if we enact it, we are going to depend upon our Patches program to tell us how it's working, and we're expecting an update from that. So I don't see the benefit in putting a sunset on it.
I would just say that I do not know of a single public entity that shows up voluntarily and says, we don't need that rule anymore. It just, yeah, I mean, we just end up with a, you know, you just end up with a 330-page constitution for the State of California or whatever it is, you know? So I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I think this, you know, barring a few, you know, tweaks in my driving cattle in the park amendment, I'm fine with this, but just throwing it out there for consumption, I'm totally fine with just going with it as written.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Any other comments? Okay. With that, let's see, attorney will read the title, and then we just need one council member to introduce, and then, as stated earlier, it'll come back for a second reading. Can we get consensus to read it as amended, as proposed by city attorney with that one caveat?
Yeah.
In case of life, health, safety, we don't need the 24 hours?
Thank you.
Okay, just so we're all clear.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you, an ordinance of the city council of the City of El Segundo, California, amending Chapter 6, General Offenses of Title VII, nuisances and offenses of the El Segundo Municipal Code, adding Chapter 8, Prohibited Camping to Title VII, nuisances and offenses to the code, amending Chapters 1, Parking Park Rules and Regulations, and 3, Beach Regulations of Title 10, Parking Recreation, and amending Chapter 7, Public Buildings of Title 9, Public Ways and Property, there's a typo, that we will clean up, to establish anti-camping and associated regulations on public property and authorize the adoption and enforcement of the El Segundo Public Library Rules of Conduct, with the caveat proposed by my office, is available for first reading.
Who would like to introduce?
So moved.
All right, Councilor Prostuck introduces, thank you. Good work, Mr. Vasquez, appreciate it. All right, we're onto Item 17, Agreement with Nationwide Environmental Services for Citywide Street Sweeping Services. Mr. George, who will present?
Our Public Works Director will present that item. Okay, Daniel, okay, thank you, Daniel.
He knows we don't allow Western shows, doesn't he?
Yes, yes, I do. All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. My name is Daniel Pankow. I'm your Environmental Programs Manager. It's my pleasure tonight to present this item as it relates to street sweeping services for our community. A little bit of background, efficient and effective street sweeping is a key component of any street maintenance program. It protects public health and safety and is also a requirement under our NPDS permit, which is issued by the State Water Board. Nationwide Environmental Services is a family-owned business that has been providing sweeping services in El Segundo since 1994. In 2009, just prior to the expiration of their contract, the city released an RFP to obtain proposal from qualified vendors for street sweeping services. The bids received at that time were substantially higher than the contracted rates with Nationwide. Ultimately, the city decided to amend their agreement for an additional five years through 2014. In October of 2014, the city executed an amendment to Nationwide's agreement for an additional five-year term through September 30th, 2019. And then on September 30th, 2019, the city executed a new five-year agreement with Nationwide that brought us through September 30th, 2024. This is their current agreement, and it is included as a staff report attachment. The scope of work stays the same as the previous agreement and covers weekly street sweeping of streets, alleyways, of approximately 8,570 curb miles. Weekly sweeping of parking lots of approximately 13,382,200 square feet, and those are the parking lots, and then also special event or on-call sweeping. The grand total of these services is approximately $492,000 for the first year with an annual 4% CPI increase. And when we talk about special event or on-call sweeping, these include events such as the annual Fourth of July celebration and also the Christmas parade. Historically, street sweeping services, that's a tongue twister, were not subject to prevailing wage requirements. However, on October 4th, 2021, the DIR issued a comprehensive written opinion for the City of Elk Grove that concluded street sweeping services fall within the definition of public work and therefore are subject to prevailing wage requirements. The DIR opinion has been challenged and/or questioned on multiple fronts. There is currently a movement to get a bill in front of the legislature that would make it clear that street sweeping does not fall within definition and is not subject to prevailing wage. Another potential challenge is with the actual street sweeping wages that are published at a current rate of $96.25 per hour. that are published at a current rate of $96.25 per hour. This is the rate that is proposed within the agreement and is utilized as utilizing a different rate would involve significant risk if deemed improper by the DIR. This published rate falls under engineering category, and we believe is appropriate for only specialized street sweeping services of a type used to clean newly constructed freeways. This service involves a more specialized equipment and more skilled labor. The city attorney's office is in early stages of coordinating with the League of California Cities to seek a wage determination from the DIR of a more appropriate for the type of street sweeping that we need in our community. In the event that either the legislature amends the law to clarify street sweeping is not subject to prevailing wage, or DIR publishes a lower wage for these services, Nationwide will be obligated to immediately renegotiate the terms of the contract accordingly. The current agreement with Nationwide expires the end of this month. Staff investigated the situation and has determined that a new agreement with Nationwide would be the most economical versus issuing a new RFP, but also reflects the high level of service provided over the last 30 years. The annual cost of service during this final year of Nationwide, during this final year of our agreement, is $216,000 and some change, not including fuel surcharges. This current agreement does not does not require the payment of prevailing wages. And although these rates are significantly higher than what the city has been paying for the same service, they are highly competitive compared to other cities that have switched to the prevailing wage requirement. Cities that are adhering to DIR's prevailing wage requirements for street sweeping include the cities of Elk Grove, Santa Ana, Palo Alto, LA County, and Manhattan Beach. In fact, in July of 2023, our neighboring city, Manhattan Beach, went out to bid for street sweeping services. And the size and the scope of the work detailed in that RFP was very similar to our current sweeping agreement with Nationwide. And Manhattan Beach only received two bids from sweeping companies, and the selected proposal included prevailing wages, and their detailed first-year costs were around $713,000 and cost per curb mile of $58.50 compared to Nationwide's first-year cost of $492,000 and per curb mile cost of $52.83. These costs are significantly more expensive than those proposed by Nationwide. So staff recommends a five-year agreement with Nationwide Environmental Services. Nationwide's drivers are familiar with the city's streets and public parking lots. They've been servicing the city for 30 years. Public Works' operational staff has a collaborative working relationship and believe it's in the city's best interest to continue that relationship. They provide excellent cleanup services at no cost after major city events. The proposed five-year renewal contract maintains all the terms and conditions from the previous agreement except for the addition of the prevailing wage requirements. Now, if we have any questions, and I would also like to note that we have Ani Samwalian from Nationwide here, and she serves as the president, and she can ask and answer potentially more detailed questions.
I got a question. How much does a street sweeper cost? It's got to be less than $2.8 million.
I'm sorry, but what is?
How much is the actual street sweeper cost for us to purchase our own and staff our own thing? It's got to be less than $2.8.
Yeah, this is the case, right? Everybody contracted out street sweeping because they thought it was going to save money and clearly they have to strike back.
This is preposterous.
Well, I know the trucks are not going to be frankly cheap, a few hundred thousand dollars. And then, of course, we have a staff. I, one thing I'd like to add, if you don't mind, to the presentation, is the prevailing wages is, as as Daniel indicated, it's not fully worked itself through the process. So this extension is based on the fact that if, in fact, the prevailing wages do not hold up, or if the minimum wage is lesser than what we have considered in this extension, that we go back and renegotiate the price of disagreement with Nationwide. I just want to make that point very clear.
Elias, where can you point to me in the contract I'm reading that says that? I know it says we can terminate at any time without cause with written notice. They can terminate within 30 days. I see prevailing wages slash NA on page 313 of the agreement.
Yeah, I I can find it for you.
Okay. And then, just so everyone knows, we're talking about prevailing wage is any public works job that a city or a state or a county does. You have to pay what is like a union wage fully burden for any employee. So whereas I could get my house painted, or someone get your house painted for 20 bucks an hour, a prevailing wage for that same labor could be $58.78 an hour based upon some state formula from who knows where. But that's why when we publicly bid these projects, you know, the fields cost so much. Everything costs so much money. So the switch here is, we were paying non-pervailing wage for a street sweeping service. There's an opinion that says we have to pay prevailing wage. And so now we're almost going to double for what we've been paying for based on this prevailing wage issue.
Yes, so let me first go back to, the agreement is still being worked out. I I believe that our city attorney received the last rail line from Nationwide. But it, the, what I discuss is, is one big paragraph of that agreement is not attached. It still is is being worked on by our city attorney. So, I'm sorry, the second part of your question had to do with, I'm sorry, but what's the second question?
No, the second part was just me talking about prevailing wage and why it's driving up the price on this.
Yeah. And and the only other thing I'd like to add, the prevailing wages is for just the time that the employee is operating the truck. Does not include when they are working on the routes or plan on the routes, if you if you would. If they are doing other things, it does not include that individual to be getting prevailing wages. It's only when the individual is driving and operating the truck. Just want to make sure that I'm communicating that.
I, yeah, I just, like, how is it possible the DIR thinks that $200,000 a year for a street sweeper, which is, I imagine, unskilled?
So as Daniel mentioned, our attorneys had the same concerns. So so did I and everybody else. And and this is being challenged. I think most likely DIR would perhaps, and I'm just speculating, DIR is not frankly going to be able to sustain that decision for municipal sweeping contracts. What they are talking about is is more or less applies to sweeping or cleaning of highways because that's a lot more labor-intensive than just a sweeper who is mechanical and and just drives by and picks up the trash. That's what we think. But frankly, in order to be able to lower the risk, our attorneys is advising us to go ahead and consider the prevailing wages for for the time being till such time that decision is made otherwise.
Joaquin, do you want to describe what the risk is for not paying prevailing wage on a city project?
Yeah, I mean, there are civil and and potentially criminal fines and and penalties that can be imposed for violating prevailing wage.
But there are law firms that specialize in bringing prevailing wage actions, and they'll go to a job site and talk to subcontractors and give me your pay stub. And if that pay stub doesn't match the prevailing wage, that's a lawsuit on the sub, the general, the project, the owner. And that's all these guys do.
They get a bounty on it, yeah.
Yeah, it it's, it's, you know, lawyers are going to lawyer. So it's, there is a high risk if we are caught not paying prevailing wage when there is a opinion out there saying that this work is a prevailing wage job.
What's the timeline on our our contestation of this? You said we're going back and asking for for reconsideration?
I think there's two two main avenues. One is the state legislature makes a change and says it's certainly not.
We're holding contest on that.
The second front is the DIR itself establishing a more appropriate rate for the work. And I I'm not tuned in, but I I think maybe you indicated that Greg may be working on a, or they've already asked for an opinion letter from DIR.
They are very much, our attorneys very much involved. And basically, the way I I understand it, DIR has an opinion that is being challenged by by many people. But the legislature is is really what has the trump card. In other words, if DIR sticks to this opinion, the legislature could get involved, and they could trump that decision.
Well, there's a legislative bill right now, right, that would make you pay prevailing wage for any contested or contracted work, right?
Correct. And the legislature has not, has not decided on this yet. I believe they, it is in their agenda to to take a look at this. Knowing them and how they operate with the DIR, I would think it's going to be four to six months before a decision could be firmly made as to whether or not the prevailing wages are going to apply or or they won't.
Okay, but our our vendor who we've had since the 90s, hi. I understand that you are on board, that if this is to change, then we will get a new, if you don't mind. Because we're having, yeah, if you please, don't mind, we're we're having a bit of heartburn. I hope you can help us out. Yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Councilmembers. My name's Ani Samwalian. I'm the President of Nationwide Environmental Services. We've been proudly providing services to the City of El Segundo, a family business. My dad started it, I'm second generation. I love what I do, and yes, this is crazy. And I've been engaged and involved with the League of California Cities and Contract Cities. There was actually a bill two years ago that was defeated. It was going to become law. And during that time, the DIR's letter was still lingering out there, and it was never revoked or amended. So right now, we have, there's a group of cities getting together, like a coalition, working with the League and Contract Cities to try to get it revised, basically to say municipal sweeping is an environmental issue, not public works issue. We understand prevailing wages on construction, but this is more to meet NPDS, PM 10, and all of that stuff. So they're trying to figure out that at this point, if not come up with another rate, not 96.25. But I completely understand where you're coming from, and I'm with you. And we agree, our attorneys have spoke, and they did add language that will be presented in the agreement that specifically says if and when it's reduced, modified, changed, we will absolutely, absolutely reduce the price. My word, my word is gold, I live by that. And it's in the contract as well. So that's kind of the situation. Unfortunately, it's not in my hands, the city's hands. We're right now up in Sacramento trying to figure it out, and that's kind of where we're at.
I I appreciate that. And and don't, don't believe for a second we think you had anything to do with this. The Sacramento thing, we deal with Sacramento all the time, but thank you for that consideration.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a quick question on this one.
Absolutely.
So in this situation where you're required to pay the 90, whatever, an hour, is the driver actually getting all of that?
They will absolutely. I will have certified payroll records. We'll be submitting that to the city.
And what are they currently getting paid roughly?
The going rate of a street sweeper operator in the industry varies from $25 to $30.
So how are you going to justify, like, we're quadrupling your pay, and that might go backwards in the future?
It's, trust me, as a business owner, it's, we want everyone to have good wages. Absolutely, we support good wages. We want everyone to have good wages. But we understand it's an unfunded mandate to the cities, and it's kind of a pass-through for us. So for us, we just have to follow whatever the law is. So we're just doing whatever we're told. But whatever it is, we're going to work with the state, the city, whatever we can do.
Great, thank you. Do you know who supported the bill that's been?
AB 2557. I, it says it's been amended as of the end of July. I don't see the current state of it. It doesn't look like it has moved on.
But the last bill was AB 1886 that failed, and that was from Elk Grove Cooper bill that it didn't pass. So right now, they're trying to figure out if it's going to go through the legislative channel or they're going to go directly to the DIR and get all the cities engaged, involved, and then maybe do a survey, because that's what the DIR says. So there's a lot of different avenues, but the League of California Cities and Contract Cities, everybody's engaged. So it's kind of in their hands, and we'll do whatever is required.
Can we go to the dumb last slide there? I I just, with all the things that we're talking about right now, I do not see any reason to enter into a five-year extension option when you don't know what the hit's going to be. Doesn't make any sense. I understand the extension to go six months. I understand the alternate. I just don't understand why would you enter in an agreement right now? What are we saving?
Okay, so our contract expires at the end of this month.
Right, but alternatively, you have a second option.
Yes. Alternatively, what we could do is, is, yeah, we could, we could extend it for six months with prevailing wages.
I understand that, but I'm not, we're also not locking ourselves into a five-year agreement in the hopes that, okay, then we're going to revert it back. Why revert it back when you can just go through six months, right? And then get a better idea of what's going to happen and then deal your contract?
Right. And my response is, based on what I've seen the bid and what I've seen what is going on in other cities, if we do an RFP, it'll be at least 40 to 50% higher than than this bid that we have today.
My my point is, if we did a six-month extension and then signed a five-year agreement, if that's what ends up happening, and you get a ruling that states this is what's going to happen, you are going to have to pay this.
I see what you're saying.
And you do it. I'm not necessarily saying throw it back out, but I'm just saying, I'm not interested personally in throwing out a five-year agreement when I don't know what the hit's going to be.
So what you're suggesting is extend it for six months with prevailing wages, correct?
I don't see option three, so I'm assuming it's one or the other.
And come back to the city council once we know whether, whether, is that what you're suggesting?
First of all, I'm I'm kind of talking to these guys.
Okay, sorry.
I want to lean on what Councilman Drew. I I also like that approach. And and even if it turns out that we're, other vendors are 40, 50% up, this is no slight to you. You've been doing a great job with your firm. But I think it's responsible to go out and get RFPs regardless. Same issue I had with another thing that we approved recently. So I would like to have that time to do that. And kudos to you. I mean, if you're winning all those bids and truly the competitors are 40, 50% higher, I don't know how you're doing that, but that's pretty amazing. Yeah.
Is it okay if I? The long-term contract helps us as a small business. It helps us with financing. It shows the bank strength and all of that stuff for us. So that's important for us to have that as a small business. And if something happens, the city has a right to terminate at any time. So that gives us the comfort. Plus, the street sweepers are almost over $500,000. So it helps us plan for those sweepers and our operators. So all those. Also, the recent bids that did go out, they were increased from 106% to 500% increase. And there's a survey of all of those, too. So we'd greatly appreciate if the city could kindly consider going with the five-year as it helps us. And then if anything happens, there's provisions in the contract that protects the city at any time.
I I think if we've got a below-market rate right now, I'd kind of like to lock it in for five years because if this prevailing wage thing doesn't go away, then we're all going to be buying street sweepers because we can't, we can't afford to go 400% on top of the 120% we're looking at now. So this is a below-market. It's more than double of what we're paying now. But I do believe it's below what the RFPs of the market today are. So if we lock it in, and if things change, we can terminate this agreement on written notice.
Yeah, I concur with Brian Baldino. I just think, you know, it's been a partnership for a long time. There's, you know, to your point, small business, we want to make sure that, you know, we show that we're a partner and we have the ability to cancel the agreement at any time. And as long as we have the amendment to allow us for this change in the prevailing wage, then I'm I'm okay with moving forward, option number one.
Thank you both, Mayor Protem.
You know, maybe I'm just scarred with RFPs. I think with termination for convenience gives us a great deal of flexibility. So I I don't, I mean, I think that that sort of insulates us a bit. My concern, and and I hate to keep throwing things at the staff, is that, you know, these things get an inertia of their own, right? So sort of irrespective of of, when we find out that we are 10% above market or 20% above market, we're unlikely to make a change because the hassle factor and the cost of change is so high. So I'm a bit conflicted in that regard. I think probably, you can tell all of us, we're somewhat blindsided here by this. This is tucked into a lot of reasonably meaty or or brain drain. This is tucked into a lot of reasonably meaty or, or, or brain-draining pieces on the agenda, and then to suddenly look at this and say, wait, we're paying prevailing wage on a contracted service. And you can see, right? I mean, a lot of cities balance their books on contracting this out, so you can see how the empire comes back. I guess the very short version is, I am okay with, with moving ahead with this. I just am. But boy, I hope we're monitoring this. I mean, I don't want it to just disappear, I, I don't, I mean, I, I guess I would wanna know, what's our, the path forward of we're waiting on, on DIR to?
Why don't we, why don't we just have, ask staff to come back to us in April or March with how's it going?
That would be fine, sure. Be more than happy to. By that time, we should have a decision, yes.
And if you need letters of support from a city, let us know, what we can do to help you, you know, make this distinction between residential, environmental versus public works construction. I think that's a very strong argument. It seems pretty common sense that we shouldn't be paying prevailing wages to just kind of maintain our streets.
Yeah. I, I, I really, I guess probably why I, I would be more okay than not on this is I do not see a way, a path forward in the legislative environment that, that, that building and trades and the public sector side is going to say you can pay private sector wages to what were once municipal services. I mean, this is, you know, the, they've chipped away at this from all, all sides. I, I, we can, fingers crossed, but.
But they could come up with this a, a lower amount than the $96. Like, they could come up, it could be a split. No, I mean, is, was, are you guys looking at any opportunity for driverless trucks? Or, I mean, is that something that you're long-term focus now that the?
Unfortunately, there isn't. There's also a limit on street sweepers. To get a street sweeper takes over two years nowadays, so it's very challenging, the environment. However, we are monitoring it, the League's monitoring it, Contract Cities is monitoring it. I'm sure they'll be notifying the city as well with all updates and I'll communicate if I hear something with the Director of Public Works as well. But that's where we're at, unfortunately, it's not in our hands, but we just wanna continue servicing this wonderful city, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to move with option number one.
Option number one with the?
Caveat of the extension of the, the change on the agreement to include the ability to change.
Most definitely.
No, I, I was gonna ask, sorry, if you just, if you could, if you consider adding to it, also that staff comes back to us in six months with the review of the legislation.
Of course. Be more than happy to.
Okay, she's okay?
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Five zero?
Nope.
Oh, sorry, sorry Lance.
Nope.
All right, thank you. All right, I think we're done, we covered everything, right? I do think there's something, I mean, we have automated lawn mowers. When I was running Bowen Alley in the early 90s, there was automated lane cleaning devices. I mean, there's something for automated street sweepers, for sure. Councilmember Bald, we're under reports, right? Councilman Baldino?
Just a quick congratulations to the Varsity Waterpole Team for winning the Long Beach Varsity Tournament over the weekend. We, we snubbed out Redondo, so they're gonna be, they're gonna be interesting to deal with in our league this year, but great job. Thank you, Councilman Baldino. We're gonna go back to the City Treasurer, which is buried under, no, no, it wasn't us, my mess, sorry. Madam Clerk, please.
Yeah, I want to just, I guess, clear something up. The Herald stated that there's a write-in candidacy, candidate, that there can be a write-in candidate for city clerk. That is correct. However, there's a process. Like, I spoke to someone today and they thought that they could just write their name in, but you can't. It's a nomination period that begins September 9th, runs through October 22nd. You have to have the 20 signatures, just like everybody else that are vetted from our office for, to make sure that whoever signed it is registered to vote with an El Segundo. And then you have a candidate, a write-in candidate form that must be signed. So anyone still interested, who is on the fence, come on and I will chat with you about what the city clerk does. And you're more than welcome to be a write-in candidate from Oc, September 9th through October 22nd is the period. And then after that, no more write-in candidates and the slate is set. So just wanted to clarify that.
Got it. Thanks for clarifying that, because I heard something different today too. I appreciate that. Okay, and sorry I skipped you there. City Treasurer, we already covered with his report. Councilman Baldino, thank you. Councilman Drew?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Perstuck?
Yeah, just wanted to congratulate everyone on the Art Walk. It was very well attended, a lot of, a lot of festivities, a lot of people walking around town. It's nice to see the businesses all being visited, so thank you for a great Art Rock successful event. And then I did wanna, since we were talking about street sweeping, I just wanted to make sure that, and I know, Daryl, you and I talked about the sidewalk cleaning on Main Street, that, that we do have a policy and that we're adhering to the power washing of our sidewalks, especially down Main Street and Grand Street. I just wanna get clarification on that. I believe it's supposed to be once a quarter. I think that's what we agreed to. I'm not 100% sure, but I just would like to make sure that we're adhering to the policy that we established.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Perstuck. All right, Mayor Pro Tem? Mr. Mayor, nothing this time. Wow. No outside meetings, huh? On the sidewalks too, it's, I know we've got like one culprit on Grand. Great business, love the business, but, you know, it's ice cream. And so it's on like, we literally, I think we just cleaned it with our vendor and two days later, it just, it looks, so, I don't know how you, I don't know if that's landlord/tenant thing, but coffee shops and ice cream shops, having run them before, tend to make the sidewalks look a lot worse. All right, I wanna bring something back, not back, but, well, I guess so, because we weighed in on it many years ago, at least several years ago. The 1% for the arts. I've heard directly from businesses in town, businesses that have been here for decades in some cases, that are struggling with the process, the inherent potentially conflicting process, because we have a staff member who's, who weighs in on what is art in some cases. And I'd just like to see it brought back to the agenda for further discussion. And we had a couple major developments hit with major price tags. And then, so, that's what I would, that's the feedback I have for our business community, I would just like to address it as a council. And then just really quickly on the Homeless Patches meeting, I touched on it briefly earlier. One of the biggest questions is, what do you do when you see a homeless person? And so our, what I heard loud and clear from our police department at that meeting was just call, call, call 911. Call 911 and they'll quickly do triage and say, hey, we'll route you to someone that's not an emergency, but feel free to do that. And Chief Rodriguez and Lieutenant Mier, who's heading up the homelessness initiative, made that loud and clear. And then Jose talked about our IT Director, a new app that's coming on board, which I know Barbara Bass and her department's been working on a while, which is gonna be replacing our reported function on the website. And that's gonna be great, because right now, when I see someone that I think needs help, I'm like texting you and the chief on a weekend. And I know it's probably not ideal, but, so that's good that that's coming. We, I met with a SCAG Government Affairs Rep, Eric Rodriguez, recently, and I made a plug, I know Mayor Pro Tem's been working on this as well, but just the green belt nudge for dollars, because there might be some SCAG grant dollars for parks, and that's been a work in progress. And he said that was proceeding fairly well. And then I met with the Lawa CEO, I think you guys had an opportunity already to meet with him, right? And I, I was out of town or something. So I met with John Ackerman separately. Good meeting, expressed our concerns about multiple things. I was glad to hear that Zero and Nine, I don't know if this has officially been set, but Zero and Nine are way out in the future now, because their, their airport traffic is way off goal. Like, way off, they are way behind all the major airports in the US, so they have no plans for Concorde Zero and Nine in the near future, and that's really good news for the City of El Segundo. And then I just told them, look, there's, you have to do something. I know it's not really in your control, the City of LA, but Imperial is such an eyesore. We're about to put a monument sign there. Every time, without, without exception, that I drive by Imperial, I'm sure all of you as well, there's trash, it's like a catch basin for trash. Looks terrible at Imperial in Maine, and getting them to do anything. I know there's an email that went out recently to Ryan Jackson, Mayor Bass's office, LA, I'm meeting with Councilman Tracy Park, I forgot to mention that, next week to tell her the same thing, like, you gotta help us with this. So that's all I have on that front. City Attorney?
Nothing, nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good job tonight. Joaquin, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick question on that. Do we know when that Measure W project starts? In that meeting, I know, I can't remember, because Lawa told us. Do you remember why I said, what, the six months out or a year out, or?
Actually, I've been working with City of LA and County of LA, and I'm trying to push them to go through the process and, and award.
They allocated $17 million to it.
That, that's right. And, and, and it is, the ball is in their court and they need to identify a firm, go through our RFP, everything is done, the funding is there. I'm just trying to shake them and, and selecting a consulting firm and get on with it.
Thank you, sorry about that. The reason it qualified, Chris, if I remember correctly, Mayor Pro Tem, was that because now it just goes straight to sewer, right? But the idea would be that it would recharge the aquifer, basically?
That's right. They would have something that would recharge for, to stall, to stop saltwater penetration, intrusion on it, and the rest of it would go to, for greenery in the middle of it.
Yeah. It would, it would be great to get an update on that, because if that didn't come up in your recent meeting with Lawa, that's important to know. Oh, did? Okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney? Yes?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. City, did I do that? Wow. All right. City Manager, did I skip you too?
Yes, no, no, Mayor, I, I do have a, a quick update on our Hyperion efforts that I report at every meeting. In anticipation, as you know, of the, actually, on Thursday, September 5th, the AQMD Board Hearing will take place, specifically in follow-up to the previous hearing they did a couple months ago. In anticipation of the meeting, we provided a letter to AQMD requesting a number of things be added to the abatement order. So we're hoping that that'll be read into the record, we will, we'll make sure it is. And really, we, we highlighted five items, or six items, that I'd like to share with you. Providing the city with all long-term maintenance plans, which we've been asking for and haven't received. Implementing bio-solid loading improvements with the goal of reducing odors. Improvements to the bar screens and replacement protocols. Setting up a preventive maintenance plan and keeping backstock of vital parts. Implementation of a new bar screen overpass system. And then finally, to ensure compliance with all OSHA requirements. I wanna thank the council for their reviewing of the, the letter. It did go out and, and again, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets read into the record. In addition, the, I, I did speak with Ryan Jackson, and I know the mayor spoke, reached out to Barbara Romero. As you know, last meeting, you directed us to retain a kind of a, in addition to Dr. Stenstrom's contract, someone that would come in and work directly and on the Hyperion facility. We were concerned about getting access. Both Ryan Jackson and Barbara Romero have really agreed to that, allowing us that access. So that was pretty huge to, to receive. And so we'll be looking for potential candidates for that position that has really the background of stormwater treatment plants. And I know we got a recommendation from the Mayor Pro Tem that we're following up on too. We reached out to him today. As far as AQMD, retail, details regarding that meeting are available on the city's website. I know the agenda came out, but the actual Zoom link hasn't been activated yet, but it is part of the agenda that we've sent out to, put on the website, and we've sent it to each of you. And then also, since August 19th, AQMD has responded to approximately 33 odor complaints, so the complaints are still coming in, but they did not confirm any public nuisance violations regarding those, those complaints. Hyperion has notified us of ongoing intermediate pumping station maintenance that's starting on September 9th, and it is anticipated to last for two weeks. During the work, the covers unfortunately will remain open on weekdays, it may result in increased odors. They do tell us the appropriate odor control measures will be, will be implemented during that time. Also, on August 28th and 29th, a few of Hyperion's air quality monitors were down for scheduled maintenance. Unfortunately, I know we, a number of emails we got from residents about, about why they weren't informed of this. Our understanding from Hyperion was that Montrose Air Quality Services, which monitors or regulates those, those systems, those monitoring stations failed to notify even Hyperion that they were undertaking this work. And then also, on August 29th, Hyperion did conduct a planned exercise of the one-mile outfall gate. And then finally, something new that Hyperion has implemented, they've, they've created this advisory panel, where they've retained the services of the previous plant manager from the 90s has come in to act on this advisory panel, which will be, you know, obviously managed by the, by the district and also contains other former staff members to come back and share some history and hopefully help improve the, you know, the techniques and items that they've been looking at doing. So they do have an advisory panel that I think our new person can work directly with. So that concludes my Hyperion report.
Real quick, Derek, how's the plant manager recruiting going?
Oh, thank you. They, they've selected five finalists. They're in the process now of putting the interviews together. I'm still waiting to hear from Ryan, Mr. Jackson, if I can get, if I can get a seat at the table on that interview board. I guess it's going through a number of channels, I mean, it has to be approved by Mayor Bass, which they've recommended, by the way, Ryan, and actually even Barbara Romero has, has recommended or, or approved me sitting on that panel. So that, we'll see. And then also, separate from that, the, the app that you referred to, that IT's working on, really excellent app, pretty soon you'll be able to hook on your phone. We're gonna do a display of that at a future council meeting, so you'll get to see how it works. And then finally, thank you for the extension of my agreement. I look forward to working with you all another year. Lot of fun things ahead, and again, thank you for, for your confidence and support in me. Appreciate it.
I just have one question. So I know we started construction on the plunge. If you could give us an update on how that's going, making sure that there's been no red herrings found and that we're on track with the approximate bid?
Sure. So we are reassessing the existing tiles in the bottom of the pool and the report which I got today, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive into it in more detail, is that some of that, some of that existing tiles we may not be able to reuse, which means, you know, it's gonna cost a little more. But other than that, things, things are going well. And I hate to say this, the, the nature of this, the work, you know, I mean, this is a renovation and, and frankly, I'm bracing myself, because there are things that, you know, may, may happen. My hope is that we keep that to the minimum, but things are going well. We, we are lucky to have a very good contractor who's willing to work with us, and he's very genuine. And this is good.
And one of the things I also want to mention is that Jane Burnell, one of our residents, also a member of the Women's Club, she was instrumental in getting the Women's Club recognized as a historical site. She is already in the process of setting the, the motions in place to get the plunge set as a historical site. We partnered with the Communications Department, Darnell and his team, and see before, just before we kind of started construction, we did a whole videography, picturing, picturing, documenting all the information, so that she can have that information ready to start the process. And I did reach, talk, or have communication with her today, and she, according to the state, they, the, the agency, we can, they can start the process now, and so she just needs to get documentation of, of historical information and if she could get the original plans. So she wants to know who she could contact at, with at the city to get the original plans and see if we have any drawings or historical stuff. So I will be in touch with you and Michael to.
Sure.
But I just wanna let know, let everyone know that that process is taking place.